Okay. We're gonna open our Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, January 21st.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-second. Twenty-first it says. Twenty-first, 2020. Can we please stand to pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we do not have anyone for resident comment. Ed, could you read in the warrants?
Sure. Proven warrant, payroll warrant, 20-29, amount of $159,679.62.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Bill warrant, 20-29, amount of $605,503.80. Breakdown, town, $102,664.69.
These are on.
The big ones are on.
Thank you so much.
And I'm sorry, did someone second that?
I got it.
Who seconded the motion?
Did someone second that?
The first one I did.
How about the second one? Did you get to that one?
I'm still reading it.
We didn't get too far through that one.
Okay.
We'll try that one, we'll go over that one again. As soon as Tracy's ready.
Hi, I got this one. Go ahead, Ed.
Bill warrant, 20-29, amount of $605,503.80. Breakdown, $102,664.69. Water and sewer, $23,774.19. Payroll withholding, $3,290.83. Light bills, $202,376.94. Grants and revolving, $17,060.15. Woody, your assessment, $256,337.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, so moving on, we have discussion and possible vote. FYI, 2021 capital improvement submissions. Discuss the following requests, starting with the cemetery.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to accuse myself from the meeting as my husband, Mike Chester, else is on the.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you got the floor.
Thank you. To the select board.
And probably state your name if you would.
Yes, my name is Rock Dowell. I'm the chairman of the Cemetery Commission. I live at 107 School Street. We have put in for a vehicle to replace the small pickup truck we have now. This vehicle is a regular, full-size pickup truck. It'd be a three-quarter ton with a V-plow. We feel this is necessary to keep the roads in good shape for the winter time. The cemetery is busy even in the wintertime. There are a lot of people that come in on weekends, people during the week to visit their loved ones. The highway department is out straight with breakdowns on their vehicles. And sometimes they, the cemetery gets left to last, which is understandable. But we feel that if we had our own truck, we could, you know, get materials that we need. Plus, we can keep it plowed. And if necessary, we can help pick up some of the slack during storms. Some of the smaller areas, you know, around maybe the libraries or the fire stations, things like that, that we could help out that way after Chuck gets the cemetery done. The proposal before you is from MHQ. They're qualified as a bid proprietor for the state of Massachusetts for $41,191.60 for a three-quarter ton truck with a eight-foot V-plow and a tow package.
Anyone have any questions?
This replaces your 2006 Ford Ranger.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, we've been, it's, it needs to be replaced to begin with. So, I mean, it's in tough shape. So, we just felt that by getting a regular, full-size truck, it would be advantageous to us at the cemetery and to the town, too. And it can fill in.
Yeah, that truck you get up there has seen its better days, anyway.
If it had any better days. It's gone by.
It's gone by.
It has.
It's gone by. And it may not, miles-wise, it may not have that many, but it's, it's in tough.
Well, we can't, we can't trust it. I mean, it, you know, it's been put together, you know, you need a screwdriver to open up the back tailgate. I think that's why we've got that fixed, huh?
What's wrong with that?
Nothing, nothing. I understand with the vehicles you've had, so. And I know it wouldn't bother you in the least.
Yeah, it, yeah, I knew the back tailgate didn't open. In fact, I don't remember, the driver's seat doesn't move.
We, not very well. Chuck did find the, there was a plastic insert for the bed he found out behind the building one day. Don't know why it was there, but he was able to put it back on the bed because that had some holes in it, too. But this will have a full bed liner, a spray-on bed liner in this one, because they're the best, anyway.
Mike, anything? I just got one question on, I guess it's the line item for the eight-and-a-half-foot V-plow.
Yes.
$7,125. That's the cost?
Yep.
Is not an option for a used plow?
You'd probably play close to that. This is part, no, this is part of a package. I mean, this is all gone out to bid and everything. So, I mean, this is the bid price. So, I don't know. I mean, we looked at, at single, you know, one-way plows, but the problem is with the narrow streets we have up there, a V-plow would work a lot better and just push it off to the side. Then he can maintain them, too.
So, the V-plow is a two-piece plow? That's what that means?
No, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a straight plow. You can angle it or you turn it to a V, all in the same thing. So, you push off both sides, go through a narrow road, then you're not piling it up on just one side.
And the, and so what are the plans for the old one?
Surpluse it.
Surpluse it?
Yes.
Not, you couldn't even trade it in there?
I could talk to him about a trade-in. I could send him pictures, but I mean, I don't know. The way that ends, it may cost us more to get the, if he has to take that. But I mean, I'll talk, definitely would talk with a trade, but I wanted to get this online so we could discuss the, discuss it.
Everyone's good? No, I know you're, you guys are definitely in need of that. Back when I was up there and I was a commissioner, we had a one-ton dump that was there. It got sold for some reason. I don't know why. I had a plow.
I know.
I went out, I got a tractor, took my time, went out, found it, got a used tractor, brought it down there. That ended up leaving there for some reason or other. And it was nice because you could take the dirt and spot dump it all over the place.
I know. This was after you and before me, so.
I know. So, anyway.
We're trying to, we're playing catch-up, be honest with you.
So, I know that this is something you desperately need. You actually probably could use a little tractor, but, you know.
One thing at a time.
One thing at a time. So, yeah, I'm on board with it and I think it's much needed.
The only other thing I want to talk about is I had put in, by talking with the finance director, we need, we need the roof replaced up there. It's leaking right down through, we don't know what it's gonna cost. I got a rough estimate on just replacing the roof is $8,250. But once he strips the roof, we don't know what's underneath it. But she put that in with a bunch of other things that have to do with town buildings. So, this is something that's near, it's leaking in through the garage area, through the insulation that's there. And if that's not, it's not gonna get any better unless we have that thing repaired. So, that's something we need also.
How about that building down when you first come in on the right? How's the roof on that one?
I really haven't checked that roof. But the, the idea was years ago, I guess, was to try to pick that up and move it or jack it up and, and make a little block foundation for it so the wood's not resting on the ground. That's a historical building. That was what they called the Hearst House. That's where the Husdron Hearst was. And if we can save it, it would be good. Somebody has already asked Woody to come down, take a look at it, see if there's something they could handle. I don't know where that went. I could try it again and talk to somebody, but we have, that has to be jacked up and have, you know, maybe one or two courses of cement block so that he could set the wood on the block itself. We use it for storage and it's handy that way.
Would that take away from the historical value of it?
I wouldn't think so. We're not changing the construction. I mean, you have to keep things up. I mean, same with the hand tub out here. If we don't keep it up, the historical value will be gone because it'll rot, you know, and disappear.
I just wanted to comment on the Hearst House because I believe there was CPC money allocated a couple of years ago for that that hasn't been touched.
I'll, I'll get in touch with you.
Was it the Hearst House? There was one of the buildings there that was, I was just trying to pull up the spreadsheet. There's money for cemetery that hasn't been touched.
When they did over the front arch and all that.
But there was a second one that, no, I thought it was for that, but maybe that was the one that Bob was gonna submit before he left. Okay.
Okay, well, we can check that out in another thing. I think before that, we might want to do something with the new construction that's going on. Everybody's been up there, but it's just wide open. I've had comments from people, apparently nobody reads the paper, that all of us and now they realize our house is going in next to the cemetery and it's gonna be wide open. And I really feel that we're gonna need a fence up in there of some sort.
They were supposed to leave you a buffer. Didn't they leave you a buffer of trees?
There's really no trees there that are savable to do anything. A buffer isn't gonna do anything. We need to keep the, there're gonna be kids up there. I don't want to come up there and have people roller skating or, you know, on the hot top, walking their dogs, things like that. And I think we need to have a fence up there at some point in time.
I think the fence was included in that project.
We have a small bit of fence as you start to go up.
No, no, I thought the developer agreed to do something with shading, Denise? No?
That was the first developer that came in. This is the second developer that, we met, everything got signed off, apparently, and, you know, we, there were some trees we were supposed to meet with one of the developers and we were gonna tag trees that are no good. We have a big tree that's overhanging. You come in, go around to the Hearst House, you'll see this gigantic tree overhanging everything. If that comes down, we're gonna lose some headstones. And that was one of the trees I had hoped they'd take down for us, but we never got a chance to meet with this, with this second developer. Only the first developer said, "I'll meet with you guys on the Cemetery Commission and we'll mark a few trees here and there that, you know, they're rotted, they're no good, just to help us out." But it never came to fruition.
Question back to the truck. You have on here costly ongoing repairs. Any idea what the costs for the repairs ongoing are currently to that vehicle?
I really, I don't, Chuck, do you have any idea? It's just, if it runs good, if it breaks, we just fix it. I mean, it's just an ongoing thing. It's really not worth anything.
No, but are you saying it's $5,000 to keep that thing running a year? Is it $10,000?
Oh, no. It's a few thousand dollars a year, but it really doesn't serve our purpose anymore. It's small, and if he has to go get something large, you know, in this way here, this other truck will pull the trailer that we got if he has to take a piece of equipment someplace.
Thanks.
Everyone all set?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
No problem. Thank you.
Kathy, are you up there?
Yeah.
All the income for you for Kathy.
Okay, so moving on, we have the faculties. Capital improvements submission.
So, the next one is the two requests under facility maintenance. So, the first one is municipal infrastructure improvements. And included in the packet are requests from the different departments regarding items that need to be taken care of in their buildings in addition to the entire facilities assessment that we had completed by a grant. And you'll see the list of the capital assets and the life cycle and the items that they recommended replace and costs associated with replacing those. So, this first request is $100,000. The primary list on the first go-around would be for town hall carpeting, library windows, central fire station doors, south station masonry work, police station AC units and bathroom fans, cemetery roof and doors and ceiling tiles and all the buildings. Those would be the first items we would like to tackle. If there's money left in that $100,000, we would continue down our list to accomplish what else we could. And if there is not, it would go on the following year's request. Do you have questions on that?
I thought we just did the fire station doors, not the wall.
This is for the actual interior, the doors going in, not the, not the garage doors, the physical doors to the fire station. They're all rotting around the door frames.
Yep.
So, Steve has patched it and done some painting, but they really need to be replaced. Not unlike what we just did with the library.
Right.
Only their door frames all need to be replaced over there.
Okay, anyone else have anything on this?
No, everything, everything that's mentioned is, everything's in need of, makes sense.
Bill, you good?
Yeah.
Mike, you're good?
The other item on this is something we've talked about, electronic digital board for out front. The company has not been able to get that working, so everyone who sees it, it's just the date and time that scroll on. We have no access to update that sign. I was given a quote of $17,000 for a fully colored digital bulletin board. I know this is not a huge priority, but if we had the funds available, I think the community likes to see those messages and it would be something good to get back working.
How old is that current board?
2011, I think. 2010 or 2011.
Only last nine years?
For whatever reason, it just isn't working.
They can't figure it out?
They can't figure it out. They don't know why it won't update. We've replaced the computers, we replaced all the cables. Just won't update.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Kathy.
What I was wondering is, obviously, I never liked the red sign, so I'm kinda glad it's broken, but I know it costs money nevertheless. But rather than putting it on to next year's budget when you have to wait till July 1st to do the work, would we consider putting it on the special town meeting warrant that precedes the annual town meeting in order to get this message board up and operating a little bit sooner? I think it's a nice, nice thing to see the notices, see what's going on in the town. I know there's other ways to get the information, but I think people do find it useful. So, I'm asking my board members.
Yes, so if it's something that is supported by the board, we could certainly put it on the special town meeting warrant versus the annual and have the money available in May versus July.
Is there $17,000 to use in the special town meeting?
Well, it could still come from free cash. Just, it would be appropriated in 19 or 20 versus 21.
Anyone else?
Anyone else commenting on something?
On this? On taking it and using it for special town meeting to get it appropriated?
I have no. No problem either way.
If, if it was approved at the special town meeting, how, how much sooner could it be done than if it was done at, passed at the annual town meeting?
Money's available seven days after the close of special town meeting. So, it could be ordered in early May versus being ordered in July.
Talking a couple of months, maybe.
So, I would just, I'm sorry, Bill, I don't.
Go ahead.
It's really, if you approve of the project and we have the money, it really makes no difference if it's on the special or the annual. It's still coming from the same pot of money, so I don't think you need to focus on that right now. I think it's a good option, but it's more whether or not you think we need the new board.
I know in the past, the covering board we have has had space issues. Will the new board that you're proposing here also have those limitations or has that memory been expanded to maybe offer more?
No, we should be able to offer more. I would still caution that, you know, we don't want to overload it because then, you know, people driving down the street might see, you know, one message the whole time. We don't want to put too many so that it's too much information on there, but it would accommodate more notices and better graphics. So, if you see the West Newbury sign now is more updated, the one at the Haverhill Stadium has more graphics availability than our current board has. It would just be a little more current and some more availability.
You good, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, our current board has no graphics, no, no messaging, no nothing, so.
And very little memory is what I found out.
Put a clipboard out there and have more information.
Maybe we should just put things to it.
The only reason I wouldn't want to put on the special town meetings is because I wouldn't want the people to sit there and say, "Well, the selectmen take care of themselves and they move something forward." I would just think that maybe people might say, "Well, why can they do what they want when they want?" So, that's the only reason.
Well, and I would just say to that, you could put everything on the special town meeting. If we're using free cash, you could put all the capital items on special if you'd like to. There's no requirement for one or the other. So, that's something you could keep in mind.
And if I could respond to that?
Sure.
Thank you. So, this is the piece of equipment that's broken, that informs the public, and that month by month is not informing the public. And we won't be able to have our town meeting on it, but every month we don't put things on it, then people maybe miss out on seeing something they would have wanted to know about. So, I mean, obviously, you can say no. I don't look at this as something that the Board of Selectmen owns. It's not my message board. It's the town's communication board. And I think communication is important. And it's just, it's not really an expensive capital item. That's why I thought if we wanted to get it rolling sooner. But other than that, I do think that we need to do something about the board, so I do support replacing it.
All right, everyone all set with that?
So, the next one is the Bagnell improvements. So, I put this into a formal capital this year. We've just done it sort of as a free cash transfer in the past. So, this goes along with our plans to continue to provide upgrades over at Bagnell. Last year, we did $75,000. They did a bunch, they did upgrades to the, they did some abatement of asbestos. I have not gotten their list yet. Greg Hadden was supposed to come over last week and go over their list with me, but I have not received it. I have talked to him about it. They have more rooms that they would like to abate from asbestos. And there is some discussion, I won't go into it too much here in the public meeting, but there has been some discussion between school administration and the police station about adding some additional security measures that we feel have been lacking that would be included in this money. So, again, just some additional upgrades we could do to the building and continue to take care of that facility as well.
Anyone have any thoughts?
So, is the $75,000 right now isn't really based on any items that cost this much? It's just the, sort of the designated amount we think we're gonna be able to afford?
Correct. So, last year, I had said, I told them we appropriated $75,000 and they made their list based on that of what they could accomplish. I think a lot of the same will be done. I know that they have certain projects they want to accomplish and take care of. The abatement of the asbestos is some of them. And then I know the security item is very important to the school administration.
Bill?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm aware of the security items that they have presented. I'm all for that. I don't think you can put enough money on security, especially for that building. And then all the maintenance, that's, that's the ongoing cost and ongoing improvements that need to be done, especially with some of the asbestos and things that are still in some of those classrooms. So, I'm, I'm good with that.
Bill, you good?
Yeah, I mean, it's something we, we have, has to be tackled. And this is, this is a good way to tackle it a little bit at a time and get rid of all these issues that we have so that the, at the end of the day, the entire building can be fully utilized as opposed to certain sections.
Okay, I'm good with it. I was through the, the summer, we went through it and we saw what they needed, so I think I'm pretty good with that one.
Yeah, it makes, makes sense. You gotta keep up the buildings that you, that you want. It makes, it makes sense.
Okay, moving on.
That's all I have for the capital improvements.
Okay. So, now we're moving on to the Bagnell school improvements?
Nope.
That was part of it.
All right. So, now we're gonna move on to the dog park committee. So.
Hello there, how you doing?
You're good. My name's Jason Naves from the dog park committee. And I want to thank you for coming out and spending some time with us and looking at the sites and, and you, Ed, especially for pointing out what you did at the pines. That was very enlightening. So, we discussed it and we think we'd like to utilize the area at the pines to put a new larger dog park. And we're looking for confirmation that it's okay from you so we can take that to the CPC and get a vote on the startup money that we, we need to get everything rolling.
Okay. So, what I'm gonna do is I'll just kind of do a recap of what we, what we discussed and what we, what we did. So, we met Saturday morning, Ed and I, in the committee. We started out with the pines. And if you're looking at the driveway to the pines, when you go down to the pines, you hang a right to the water department building. There's a hot top road. And on the right-hand side, where there's like a tower, there's a hot top area and a big grassy field. And that's the area they're talking about there. We looked at that site, they walked it. And then from there, we went to the Washington old water building. We walked that site. I explained to the, the committee that Denise and I had gone into Wilmington and we met with the DEP and the EPA and those guys. They have equipment there and they could use it, but the problem there is the DEP and all those guys are gonna have insight on every inch of the way, anything done to that property. And I told them that it's probably gonna be a layer of time it was gonna take you guys to get something done there. So, we looked at that site, we discussed it, and then we went over to the strawberry fields. I showed them the area where the cricket people are gonna be using. They went to the left and they saw an area over there to the left and they looked that over, they discussed it. And at that point in time, we said, "We're gonna let you guys make your decisions and get back to us." I think I got that right, do I?
Yes.
And we would go from there. So, that's why they're here before us tonight. Go ahead, Mike.
First off, sorry I didn't make it this weekend. I was expecting a confirmation email, not a removing the meeting email. So, I didn't see anything, so. Otherwise, it would have been there. So, my first choice would have been the pines anyways, but do you have any kind of drawing and layout of what you're proposing down in that area to the right? Or is it just?
No, not yet, because it was just, everything's happening so quickly. I wasn't able to put anything together. But that would be the, the next step.
Right. So, from my perspective, while I like that idea of sticking down there, not only because of people going down there, the oversight from the complex up here, being able to watch what's going on down there, I would like to see some kind of outline of what your proposal is for that specific area. Now, I know we saw a general outline a couple of months ago.
Correct.
Which you had proposed. I'm not sure something that big is going to fit over there.
Oh, yeah, no. Definitely not.
So, I would like to have some idea of what you're proposing for a complex and fencing and stuff before I go ahead and vote on it. But that's my personal opinion.
Well, anything that gets done over there is gonna be approved by you guys. So, the first step is to get the area. And then any designs or anything has to come back before you to agree that that's acceptable, that it's gonna work and make everybody happy. So, it's not like we're gonna, we're not gonna, not building without that.
I think I left one piece out that people need to know. So, if I remember this correctly, you guys were looking for a dollar amount to get your foot in the ground and to get your plans and your studies and all that, your grant. And you had told us that this is gonna be no cost to the town after that first initial bit of money because you're going for grants. You guys felt there's a grant out there that you can get, that this dog park will be put in at no cost to the town, other than the location and that startup money.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that people knew that because I left that part out.
Absolutely.
All right.
What's the, the timing with the grant? Do you have any idea, like, from the middle to award?
No, from everything I've heard, it's extremely quick. They're very liberal and very on top of everything. They're very easy to work with.
Good read, now. Hank, go ahead.
You met to choose the location, and you chose the pines. Did you meet on, on any costs? I know the question was that it was expensive, but down at the pines, you don't, you don't need the solar field, you're not going to need a parking lot. Have you, have you figured, refigured the cost of what that would save going to the pines?
No.
Okay.
And ultimately, the only thing that's going to save is, is money from the grant.
Okay.
Because, and we won't get that money, because it won't be needed.
Okay. Yeah, I know it's only been a few days, but so...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy?
Well, I'm very excited about this project. I think it's probably long overdue. We've had a really small dog park. But I want to just make sure that we have in perspective the amount of money that we're going to spend to some degree. The, I wasn't aware that there had already been a submission to the CPA for $50,000 for, is that engineering study or something? And that was written up, that you were going to rent out the park and all that. I'm just trying to, I feel like I'm playing real catch-up here, so...
Sure, sure.
I would like to see this, the specs put together as to what we're doing here, not, not go racing in with lack of information. I really love this idea. I really do. I just want to make sure that we have it specked out so that it's, it's, makes sense, it's a reasonable cost. I know about this Stanton grant, is that what it is?
Yes.
And when you take that, if I understood it correctly, we commit this site for 99 years as a dog park. Yes?
Yes. And that's one of the reasons why it has to be owned by the town.
Right. No, and that makes sense. And we have all the security and the bathrooms there. It makes so much sense. And I was actually thinking about that area that used to be the skateboard park that never quite got there, right? That's what we're talking about?
Yes.
Makes a tremendous amount of sense. I just, looking through proposals, like, from other towns, it usually takes a couple of years to do this. So what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to grapple with here is to, to make sure that we have the i's dotted and the t's crossed. And I feel like there was a proposal already put to CPA in December that I wasn't aware of, and I've caught up on this now, I'm playing catch-up. But now that's changed. Perhaps we need to resubmit that. Right? And then some kind of a spec as to what it is, because it seems like the, the other proposal is not what we're doing right now.
Yeah.
Right? Am I right?
Correct.
Right, so... It's going to be a microphone. It needs to be a microphone.
Oh, he has to go up to the mic, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's like sideline.
I'm on the dog park committee. Everything's changed in the last couple, from Saturday to now, and we are trying to catch up with that. And we fully understand the proposal is pretty much changed, like null and void now. So now we're going to come up with that piece of land, we're going to come up with another set of plans and make, custom-fit it to that location. When we drew up the other plans before, and the proposal from before, it was total pie in the sky. We didn't have a location, we didn't have a size, you know, so everything's changed. And at the meeting, we discussed with the CPA people what their contingencies were and what their feelings were. So now we're working it back. But what we'd like to do is get to the CPA point, to get our application in. To do that, we have to get an approval for that, a tentative approval even, for that piece of land. It's not, you know...
Okay, so I guess I need more information of what it is we can do with this.
Do you have something you want to say?
I do. So I have some questions. So it's the area of land directly behind the cell tower, closest to the river?
Adjacent to it, to the left of it. On the hot top driveway to the, to the right, when you, just as you go through the gate on the right, there's a little hot top pad in front of the tower, and it goes down a little bit more, and it's a big grassy field.
Okay, so a couple things. So we would have to check and make sure that none of that area is impacted by the lease that we have with the cell tower companies, because they leased that space down there. We have groups that use that for sporting practice, so we have lacrosse that uses it, soccer that uses it. We would have to make plans for them to go elsewhere if they are, if we are giving up that land. And I would think we would have to check with the water department regarding the location of the park in relation to the well that's down there. So have any of those things been taken into consideration?
Yes, we discussed it, right?
Only the water department.
Okay.
I wasn't aware of any sporting things that were held there.
Practices are held there. Actually, I already have a request for the spring for lacrosse to use that field, so we would just have to make arrangements elsewhere.
Is it at all possible they can use some of the other utility fields?
They have. They've requested multiple fields over there. But that's one of them off to the side, because I think they're trying to work around other groups. So...
Shouldn't we be adding in this? So if they didn't use that field right across from there, there was another, like, another right across from there, a diagonal, could they use that one?
Who's "they"?
Whoever you're saying is using that, that field, that they would...
Lacrosse.
Oh, I mean, we'd have to just move them someplace else, so we'd have to find other field space for them if that space isn't available. Soccer and lacrosse have both used that.
I don't think this is going to, I don't think any of this is going to happen like this year. It's going to be probably a year or so or better. But, I mean, what I was going to say is, number one, you just said a minute ago, "It's all changed, what have you." What I want to zero in on is the $50,000 number, but let me, let me...
Yeah.
So now, knowing, if, if we were able to get this location, that money, number one, let's let the people know, that money's being spent on, just kind of let, let the people know what it's being spent on, if you can, let me know.
Right, well, we cut that in half.
So now it's 25.
Twenty-five.
Yep.
And that was what we discussed at the CPC meeting.
Yep. So right now, we said 50, and people out here, they're watching us think it's 50, so now it's 25. So just say what that money's going to be used for, not holding you to it, so they know, they have an idea.
And what that money's going to be used for is, the grant requires that we have in place 10% of the overall hard construction cost.
Okay.
So that's going to be put to clearing, putting in the irrigation, the well for water, the part of the fencing.
Yep.
That's, that's what it would be used for.
So that, the 25, what happens if you can't get even the fence in with the 25? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's 10% of the overall cost, and it's based on $250,000 that the Stanton Foundation's going to give us. So what they want, in order to give out that money... Yeah, got it. Almost a quarter of a million dollars. Right, got it. They want $25,000 from the town. Yep. And they want a commitment on the land for 99 years, like a lease, like saying it. So that says to them, "Okay, these people are serious, and we will spend that money there." But that's just to kind of get the ball rolling. Right. So really, tonight, what we were thinking is, we're hoping to get is a commitment on the land, and it's tentative. It doesn't, we got a design to do, you know what I mean? It just, it's telling, it's telling the Stanton people that they, we are moving forward to get this project going. Yep. And they're saying that they're going to commit to land. Right. It could change between now and then. As far as location. Yeah. Okay. I mean, even if we came up, the other, the other piece of land was at the greenway. If you said, "Okay, we're looking to do it at the pines recreation area," and, and backup plan would be the greenway, or something similar to that. It's at least telling the Stanton people that we're serious about it, and the town's on board with it. Right. So I, I got it, 100%. And like, selectmen, captain, I was just saying, I like that area because there's bathrooms, because there's lights, because there's security. I think it's a good location. I know you guys were looking for a bigger area, what have you. Yeah. But we all got to walk before we run. Yeah. I like that area. I didn't know, honestly, I didn't know about this, what Denise is talking about, them using that field. I didn't know. I honestly didn't. Yeah. I mean, I didn't. But personally, I mean, if you have a grant out there, and you think the grant's good, and it's going to cost us 25,000, I mean, personally, me, I think that, that makes sense. It makes, for me, it makes sense, just me. Location-wise, I mean, we can say, we could say, "Yeah, tentatively, we'll give you this location and might move." I didn't, I told you guys, I was very verbal. I didn't like the Washington Street property, because there's going to be some issues with the EPA and the DEP, and it's going to take a lot. The pines, it's going to be, that property is going to be used for passive recreation and possibly be the, I just see you guys getting in there, and then them saying, "Well, now we're going to do this, we have to, you know, get you someplace you're going to stay and not have to move." That's all I'm saying. Exactly, yeah. So, and I think it's a perfect location. You've got the bathrooms, you've got, you're not going to be so close to the people playing ball and the smell that they, they said. But we have to work around this piece. There's separation there now. Right. There's definitely more separation. Right. You know? And I understand the concern about the other fields and the other, the sports. Right. But like you said, it's going to be a year and a half anyway. Right. Two years. In, in, in that time, I'm sure whatever can be worked out. So if you've got a commitment from us, saying, "We're on board with you to go with this project, tentatively using this location possibly," that's what you're looking for. And it's more, it's mostly the commitment, it's not even the money at this point.
Right.
No, 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 I'm not saying, I'm just saying... Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. It's not like you got to cut a check or anything like that. I get, I'm just trying to let everyone know. Commitment letter, saying that... Right. You know?
Okay, so that's what I was going to ask, because are we taking something to the town meeting with respect to this, or are we just, right now, doing, "This looks like a good place so that you can start to progress?" Because I would imagine that we need to have someone like our town planner, someone involved in the grant application, or Denise.
Absolutely.
Or both, Denise and Rebecca.
Yeah.
Right? Because the town has to apply for the grant.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
And I...
And they only want one point person from the town. They don't want to be dealing with, you know, a dozen dog park people. Right, right.
Sorry, Denise.
But, but I... Either that Bill does, Phil O'Neil doesn't really... Well, I'm saying, I don't think we need to take this to my, what we need to do is give them the commitment tonight. That's all they're looking for, I believe. And it could change. Doesn't need to go town meeting, right? Everything could change from, between now and whenever.
The money needs to go to town meeting.
It could, it could come to a complete halt. If they want that tonight, it's going to need to go there.
Right.
So it's not like, you know...
I, I like this idea. I would like the idea, and I'm going to steal from what Selectman Dunn said to me when I called him up, trying to get more information, because I've been trying to really catch up. And I did look at other dog parks online and educated myself. Public input, the police department, the fire department for whatever, even the recreation committee input.
Do you want us to approach them and ask them, you know, as I said, you want us to do?
However, our board decides you want to do pub, the input. I mean, I think there's, maybe with the police, if I sit down with them and kind of show them the spot, get their feedback, and then public forums. I guess all that could proceed if we think this is a good place. Is that what, is my understanding this good?
You're right. Yep.
Okay.
But like Denise just clarified, if, if, if you want the 25,000, you got, we got to go to town meeting for the 25,000. Yeah, yeah, that's not... So that's, we got to vote on that. Yeah, that's completely understandable. I think Denise brought up two good points. The solar tower leasing, how much, they don't want to be hemmed in or whatever, and the cell tower, excuse me, and the, the water department, which we knew about the water department. Yeah, I think we'll only feed off that green, off the fence line.
Something like that.
It's 400 feet from the well.
From the actual well. Someone was saying that for the tree line, you had to be, they did it, they measured it, needed to be 40 feet away. Yeah, the one working well in the building at the end there, we have to be 40 feet, 400 feet away from that, excuse me. Right. All right. Well, that stuff can all be ironed out as we go, I'm sure. Yep. I don't know if the board wants to give these guys a commitment, if someone wants to make a motion or whatever. I think it's a well worth thing, that's just me, but... There's a million different checks and balances that we have to go through before we get to the point where any money changes hands or the final approval. We have to approach with a set of plans and, you know, go through now if you want the, you know, the okay through the fire department and the chief. Those are all different. That's a matter of you guys sitting down probably with the chief or whoever does that in each department, you know? To get their input and... Right, right.
Fair enough.
I think by, by our approval, if we can vote for it, our approval, it would, it would let them go to the next step. Without, without the commitment for the, for the location, I don't think you're going to get anywhere with the community preservation. So I, I'll make the motion that we, we let them go to the next step with us.
Okay. Bill wanted to talk, your motion's on the floor.
Yeah, thanks. After everybody has said their piece, I, give me some ideas. You're currently over there behind that softball field. How many, approximately, how many square feet do you have over there?
Eighty-four hundred.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four hundred? I was...
Eighty-four hundred. And this new location is going to give you approximately how many? And I know the current location gives you almost zero possibility of expanding without having to float the, the dog park on the river.
From what I've measured out, approximately 40,000.
Oh.
Really?
Forty thousand square feet? Yeah.
And it could, I'm sorry, but it could go, if the tower's in the way, it could be shortened up.
Yes.
So we, the, the worst case scenario from what I saw, you're gonna be like 17,000. But again, I didn't go into the woods where you guys went. If you guys went up into the woods and the dogs were in the woods in the shade, you could pick up what you lose here and bring it over there, so.
Yes.
And it's just a matter of, so.
But I don't think the, uh, it would be an issue in terms of the cell tower, because there was already plans for the skate park and they already paved it and.
Yeah.
Put the hills and everything else there.
Seems to me they would have taken the skate park out of there. There's gotta be the easement road on the one side of the, of the tower.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's just out of guess. I'm sure they're not paying.
That's all stuff we can iron out.
That goes straight up in the air. I'm sure they're not paying for extra land. It's not, you know.
Right.
I, i- if, if your 40,000 were theoretically cut in half to 20, would it still be adequate for your needs? Would you still? Um, would, would you still, basically, desire that same location? Or would you be looking elsewhere at that point?
I think we would make it work.
Because of the, the location itself?
That and because of the problems the other locations have.
Yeah, i- if you remember, I started this whole thing kind of inadvertently, um, so I want to see you guys succeed.
That was the result of the, uh.
I don't remember that.
Box and Rec Committee, actually.
We all remember.
Everybody remembers that.
Saved all the emails. Saved all, I, I archived all the emails, believe me, it's.
But you know something, in all fairness, it's something that needs to be done.
Oh, I mean, it would be a good addition. It's something that all towns have.
I think it needs to be talked about anyways, and this is, I think it's led to a good thing.
Right, a good thing, exactly.
It's all good.
Yep.
It's all good.
Yep. What I would say, we'll leave it here, I would say if the board would go with you guys based on giving you the commitment, we're committed to you guys, and if we were tentatively using that location, but it may change. If that can be done, it's up to these guys.
Yep.
And then you'll have to go for your dollar amount at town meeting, what, they decide to vote in or not, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
And this will give you your next step to move forward with what you need to do. Come back to us with plans or whatever, or act, go to the police, go to the fire, and do all your due diligence.
Good. That's what I was gonna suggest, is we, we amend the motion that is tentatively for this location, and it could change.
Right.
Uh, depending on a thousand different variables. I just didn't want to be locked into that location.
Do you have, Selectman Watson made the motion?
So if, if Selectman Watson will allow a Selectman Woods friendly amendment, I, I'd, I'd be willing to second it at this point.
Uh, state the amendment again.
Uh, that is tentatively approved for the pines with an alternative possible.
Location.
Yeah, alternative location possible.
The understanding.
Yep.
Well, that was the understanding, but it wasn't the, the wording of the motion.
Okay.
So if he's amenable, if Selectman Watson's amenable to that.
Yes.
Amendment, then I second his motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We have the Water and Sewer Commissioners to discuss the January and July water rate increase.
We have one commissioner.
Materials from the Water and Department regarding their recent water rate increase.
Hi, Jeremy Laffin, uh, Lawrence, Superior Commissioner.
Thank you for coming in.
Yes, I'm glad to come in, uh, wasn't sure I was gonna be the one who was here, but I'm here, so, um, I'll do the best I can.
Thanks.
So, what's specifically?
I think what the board's trying to find out is why the rate increase?
Basically, so without it, we'd be at a, based on the paperwork you were given, we'd be at a deficit of approximately $167,000. And with the two increases, we would have a slight surplus, I think, of $26,000. I think that's in a nutshell why, just we, just the fiscal, fiscally responsible thing to do. You know, and we did it in a way we thought was as fair as possible.
Okay, um, anyone? Go ahead.
Oh, who's going?
Okay. Lady before gents.
Who's going?
Ladies before gents.
Oh, okay, thank you. Wasn't sure what he said. Okay, um, uh, and I kind of spoke with Jeremy a little bit in the hallway, so I'll just repeat what I, what I spoke about. I definitely want the Water and Sewer Department to be properly funded. Um, I was one of the, member of the Finance Board when we set up that enterprise fund that they currently operate under in order to prevent, um, general town expenditures being charged to excess water and sewer revenues, which was what was being, was happening in the past. This is going way back. Um, that being said, though, I looked at the, um, cost of service study and the recommendations from the consultant, and, um, my concern is that, that. It's only as good as if you follow. And if you don't increase the essential block of water use that most, everybody has to use, and you put most of the increase on the next blocks up, it's kind of like marginal cost pricing. Once you get to the highest block, that's the most discretionary water use. In other words, people don't have to use that in many households. So they will conserve when they get that high bill. So you won't get the revenue you expect. And I feel like that seems to be what's happening to Water and Sewer again and again and again. I fully support, um, that you're getting rid of the 10% pay it early, whatever you want to call it fee, because I make that, I think that makes it, um, very difficult to project.
We are keeping that for the, the lowest.
Yes, but again, think about the fact that, um, a household such as mine, just two of us now, empty nesters, um, we stay within that block for two of our water bills. So we're not really helping you out with catching up on building your, your, um, reserves that you need to replenish. I, I read through as much as I could rather quickly.
Sure.
It's a complex thing, but, um, I'm just wondering if the Water and Sewer, rather than, I don't know who the outside consultant is. I've never seen the outside consultant. I've never heard about what their thoughts are would be on what I'm saying here. But my experience working within Groveland, when we bring our financial forecasting in-house here and do more of it here, we have a better handle on what's going on, and, uh, we won't have these kind of sudden increases. That being said, I understand that you have a projected deficit and you're trying to play catch-up.
Yes, I've only been on the board for, for several, for several months.
Correct.
Obviously, you're trying to address it, kind of guess we can in a way that's.
Yes, we do have housing growth, but we also have a change in demographic. We have an older population if you're kids. So, um.
We also have extremely low water rates for this area.
Yes.
Even, even with these increases.
Correct.
We are still far below the neighboring communities.
Yes, that's correct, and I agree with you.
So I agree the percentages are high, but the actual dollar amounts are still significantly lower.
Correct, but everything's relative. When you're used to a certain amount of money being set aside for your water bill, and then that changes, people react with what happened. So I guess, I was just hoping to start a little bit of a dialogue going forward that these increases could be tied to your budget submissions in the future, so that when we go to town meeting and we're talking about what you want to set as your Water and Sewer budget, attached to that is the amount of money you need to collect for that budget, so that if there is an increase in price, everybody knows about it. It's not happening, you know, two weeks before Christmas, you know.
So that's a part, I, I saw a little bit of the video, I'm all, I don't understand the, um, when I saw the video from the last meeting you had, there was the implication this was done in a surreptitious fashion, which is I disagree with. But we did publish it, I think November 21st or 22nd, we were having the meeting, what the rates were going to be for our next meeting on December 16th. So I was definitely not my intention, and I think any of the other members, to sneak this in. So I don't, that, that was not, that's not the intent.
No, I know that.
And it just, if it happens to be at that time of year, then if in your opinion that's too close to Christmas.
It's not that.
Yes, I apologize, but that's not the intent.
I know, what I'm saying.
We're trying to make sure we have enough money.
Yes.
Trying to do as fairly as possible, and I think what we have done has addressed that. I agree going forward, we can, we can do a better job of planning in working with the board or whoever need be to let her know what our thinking is, what our budgetary expenses are gonna be going forward, so we can continue to do a good job.
I just want to clarify, I'm not saying that it's a particular holiday that's the problem. It is that when the town, this town is run by the annual town meeting. We set our budgets, it's pretty much our tax rate unless we go to the ballot. Everything is kind of set there, and I think that the expectation from the public is that they have heard everything. If you go to town meeting, or if you watch it on TV or you read about it, you will know what's changing for the next fiscal year, price-wise and services-wise. And that's why I'm saying, my thought would be that the springtime would be the time to, you know, when you're doing your budget in the fall, consider the revenue forecast then and bring it forward at the same time as your budget.
I see, okay.
Yes.
All right, I understand that, thank you.
You all set, Kathy?
Yes, same thing.
Mike, go ahead.
Um, just to go back to your, your point about the way this came about, um, and it wasn't nefarious or anything like that, but the perception was that you posted a meeting about your Water and Sewer Commission. Frankly, no one really reads or anything, they don't read what we put out either. And then you have an open meeting, right? Like, no one really comes to.
Literally only came to it, right.
But the meeting was 10 minutes, you said.
I think it was three minutes.
About three minutes.
I was there, and I, you know, and when I got appointed by this board, the all of our situation, I mean, one of the things Ed, he made a very clear point. He wanted things on video, and this is kind of our first foray.
Right.
Into that, and for us to be talking to no one.
Well, we do it all the time, so we're used to it, but.
Well, we are, we are, so, but, so.
But so, so then the meeting comes out, it's three minutes long or whatever, and it says we're increasing the rates 20%, and then the meeting closes, and then the town goes in an uproar, like, what happened? We didn't know this. Maybe they missed the information.
Sorry, where's this uproar? I mean, no one came to our meeting, the following meeting.
That's what happens too.
People go behind social media.
Right, so there's this, wondering and this uproar of what happened, why are we getting watering, hold on, Water and Sewer increases? Um, and then the speculation as to, you know, why is this happening? What's happening with the department? And I understand you're trying to bridge that deficit to where you need to be to run operationally, right? I understand that, but the way it came out, just, it wasn't the best way.
Okay, well, I apologize.
And it wasn't intentional, I realize that, but the other facet of that is that you have people in town who have some serious problems with their water, right? They got brown water, and it's said to be safe, but nobody wants to take a shower in brown water. Nobody wants to wash their dishes or take a bath in brown water. So there's a certain area of town where people are like, now we're having a 20% increase, and I still have water that I can't really use. Why am I paying for this? So you compound all that, and then people are like, this stinks. And that's where we got to.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is one of the reasons that I had asked if we couldn't push to have, uh, the meetings televised so that the townspeople know, know what's going on. And, uh, but in, in any event, uh, the, the, uh, 3,000, uh, what is it? 3,000 cubic feet. Now, I, I, I disagree with you as far as our water rates are, were the cheapest around. I, I disagree. Uh, I think, uh, some neighboring communities are less than us.
So I.
Based upon, based upon having friends in some of the communities, and they, uh, they're at the minimum, and, and I don't use, uh, the, I use above the minimum, less than the minimum, but, uh, but in any event, I, I dispute that fact, but we don't need to, we don't need to get into that.
I'll tell you what Georgetown has posted.
Uh, but I got other questions. Do you, uh, irrigation systems are, are becoming very prevalent, uh, and is there, do you have, I know there used to be a separate meter that people would, if they were on the sewer system, so they wouldn't have to pay if they were irrigating their lawn or filling a swimming pool, that they wouldn't have to be paying the sewer rates and something wasn't going down the sewer drain. I, I know there used to be, then they took it off. Did, did they put that back on, that they have a second meter?
I don't know, but I can find out.
Uh, and, um, because, uh, it, it's unfair to be charging people a sewer fee if they're irrigating their lawn or they're filling their swimming pool, or even, maybe even watering a garden. And, uh, so there should be, uh, some separate type of a meter so that it registers what's going out to the sewer line, and they're not paying a sewer fee on that. And the second question, uh, do you offer rebates, uh, to offset the cost of upgrading irrigation technology to, to more efficient, uh, w- water modules? Uh, some communities, uh, offer rebates if people that have an irrigation system, if they, uh, change out their sprinkler heads, change out their system, so it becomes, uh, they're not using as much water. Do you offer rebates on that?
I don't believe we do, but I could, I could check. I'm not aware of us doing that.
Okay, well, maybe it's something that they should think about. But certainly, uh, people shouldn't be paying, uh, a fee for, for sewer if it's, if they, if it's not going down the sewer drain.
Right, and like I said, we didn't, I mean, I understand in principle what you're saying, and, you know, all I know is we didn't actually change the sewer rate. This is, the change was to the water rate, not to the sewer rate.
Right, but, uh, still, uh, again, uh, I know you didn't change the sewer rates, but if people are watering their lawn, water, uh, watering their garden, filling their swimming pool, and they're on the sewer system, you, they pay sewer rates based upon what is, what the water consumption is, not what's going down the drain.
Correct.
And I know they used to, then they stopped, and I don't know if they started up again.
I'm not aware.
I think, I think that they did stop the second water meter for a while, but I do think they brought it back on, letting people have a second water meter. I'm not 100% sure.
Sure, I'm.
But I, I know I've installed a few through my company and have done the second water meters, so they must have, but.
Okay, please, I, I can, I can check, but I'm not aware.
Oh, you all done, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay.
I, I just have a few questions, um.
Sure.
I wrote down here. So you said the increase was caused by a deficit you had to make up?
Well, we had a deficit and made fiscal sense to, to make it up, yes, I believe.
Do you know what caused the deficit?
I do not off the top of my head. I do not know what it is.
Okay, so if we don't know what caused the deficit, what assurances do we have that we won't have a deficit next year, and the year after that, and the year after that, and the year? I guess one of my point is, if we don't know what caused the problem, how do we know we fixed it?
Well, we're in the midst of doing our, our budgeting now for, for next year. Um, I was not involved in it for this current year or past years, I don't know.
And I'm not looking to blame anybody, but.
I'm honestly, I'm just not aware of the process they went through in the past, and we're just starting the process for next year now. So I don't really have that, that information.
Has the, now, I guess you have deficits. Every summer I go around, you drive around the towns adjacent to us, and even before, uh, we've had a single dry day, we have mandatory water bans in almost every surrounding town. Is there any thought to sell some of the water we have to those towns? Uh, we, we seem to have an excess no matter what kind of conditions we have, whether we have rainy season or where we had an extended drought. We've never seen, um, even a partial water ban here in Groveland. Is there any thought to selling some of that water to the adjacent towns that don't seem to have enough to make up for the deficits that you're currently experiencing and may experience in the future, because the cause is currently unknown?
Right, um, I mean, I, I think we could, we could, we definitely, we should definitely should look into it. I mean, I mean, any form of revenue, I, I think we do.
I think one of the reasons why, correct me if I'm wrong, is we buy water from Hable, too.
Not the water.
No, we.
They treat our.
Sewer.
Our water is all from the wells.
Yeah.
Nothing coming in from, what's, what's over in South Groveland that comes through?
We have sewage that goes to, all of our sewage goes to Hable.
Oh, okay.
They treat our sewage, not water.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, I guess my next question is, when can I get any kind of answers to any of the three questions I just asked?
I'll address that.
Okay.
All right.
When can I get the?
Okay, so, number one, thank you for coming in. I know you haven't been on the board long, and I know you're standing there saying, well, I probably can't even answer half these guys' questions, and I, I applaud you for coming in. One of my frustrations is, this happens all the time with this board. We ask them to come in, we ask them to go on TV, we ask them to be filmed, it doesn't happen. I don't know what the, I don't know what the communication gap is, but there's a gap. I know two years ago, we gave them a building downtown, we, you know, we worked it out, we have a building. The building's still under construction. We all met, we talked about it. It's frustrating to us, or me, because we're trying to find out what's going on with this building. Is it gonna get done? It's not gonna get, try to get the answer, we can't get the answer. So you being there, maybe you can send some of the frustrations back, but I've been trying to find out what's going on with the building, because we have a plan here, we want to move, we can't move this plan till that gets done. I know they said this winter they were gonna try working on the interior of it a little bit more and getting it done.
Yes, that's, that's correct. Yeah, it's correct. I think the idea is to get most of the interior done in the winter, and I believe there's, in the spring, there's some work that needs to get done in terms of, like, grading in front of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I believe that we're working with the highway department on that, based on.
Right.
Their avail, their availability, so the, the goal would be, at some point in the spring, to be able to kind of open the building.
Right, so, um, that being said, um, if you can relay back to the board that we're trying to get better communication back and forth.
Yeah, absolutely.
I am going to take my board's questions, I'm gonna compile it into a letter through the Finance Director, or, and I'm gonna ask them to answer these questions, because we've been here and we just can't get these things answered, and I applaud you for coming in. Don't, I'm not at all.
No, no, I know, I'm not, I'm not taking it personally.
You're not saying anything.
No.
You did the best you can do. So, um, that being said, anyone else have anything else for these guys?
Well, I'll add this to the questions, but just for your information, like, I went back through your last cost of service study in 2016, and you were supposed to have increased that initial block.
And it never happened, if I recall.
I know, and so what I'm saying is, you pay for a consultant study that explains to you how you collect your water revenues and how you make sure you get the money you need. You need to follow it, you need to follow the plan.
And we're, this is why I'm trying, this is why we're pushing these, these increases now. We're just, it's unfortunate, we're in a catch-up mode.
To just something, just to think about where you're pushing the increases out, the two blocks that you're pushing them on, especially the third block, is the most discretionary block of usage, the most likely to show conservation when you send out a high-priced signal. So your, your, your projection, I'm not sure who did your projection, but I don't know if they understand pricing theory that they're probably not gonna get the revenue by putting that increase on that high-end block. You, that's why the consultant told you to increase the first block.
And we, and we've increased all the blocks, right? We, it's.
No, the first block you're holding.
No, we, we increased all.
No, the initial block, the $50 if things stay.
No, that's, um.
And, 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 you know, to be fair to you guys, too, you need a core amount of revenue to operate, you know, no matter how much water people use.
So I think our, our basic rate is giving, it increases to a minimum of $72.50 after the second increase.
I thought that.
No, I think all three tiers are increasing.
Yeah, they're all increased.
Okay, so I thought they were holding just the discount.
They're keeping the discount for the first tier, but they're, um, the rates are increasing.
It's on all, it's on all walls.
Did you project your revenue with the discount across the board for everybody?
I believe that's, that is in here.
For everybody or based on what you usually get? I mean, just.
I sure, I think it's based on, this shows the discount potential.
Okay.
It's not based on each tier. So, you know, so we, we definitely were increasing it 10% across the board against all three rates, but keeping the discount at the, at the, at the lowest rate.
But you don't know, you don't know tonight why that discount isn't there?
I think we, um, the reasoning at the time is, um, you know, we've had some people coming in who kind of li- live on their own or who tend to be more potentially fixed income, that, that will get, that will get the most benefit by keeping it at that, at that initial rate. I think that was our, that was our.
Pricing-wise, it's not designed that way. It goes to whoever wants to put in that, their bill.
Correct, but most of the people.
Again, I guess.
I mean, 87% of the bills are tier two and lower. I think that was on the last sheet, so it, it, it helps those who tend to use the, the least.
Good, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Just, just one more, one more question. Uh, what's the average water bill, uh, in a quarter?
I don't have the average, well, I have the average, I think the last one shows the usage. I believe it's the last sheet that was sent to you. So it's somewhere between the minimum and tier two. I think it's roughly, I wanna, I wanna say, um, 2,000 is what it is, what the actual average is close to.
I'm, I'm looking for dollar figure, average water bill dollar figure.
Oh, I don't, I don't have that, that sheet, the average dollar figure in front of me.
And, you know, I, I remember, uh, we, we used to get billed twice a year. And, uh, the reason for going to, uh, every quarter was so that they have, uh, like, uh, almost like a revolving, uh, people coming in every three months and paying, so they wouldn't have to wait six months before, uh, they get money to operate the department, you know? And, uh, so that, that's why we went from, from every six months to three. from, from every six months to three. But it, it seems like it was only within the last two years that they raised the rates before.
I'm not sure when the last increase was.
Because I, I remember being here and asking the superintendent at the time if, when they got the building down, the old electric company building, if because they're getting the building, is that gonna cause the water rates to go up? And in fact, we said, "No, there's nothing in the horizon to raise any water rates." And here, here we are, a short time later, and the rates are going up.
I don't know what he was basing that comment on.
Okay, so, now, thank you for coming in, number one. And I'm gonna ask the board members if you want to either tell Denise what you want in the questions, or if you wanna email them to her, however you wanna go about it.
Yeah, I'm saying we can, we can follow up on them, absolutely.
So, I don't know if you wanna just email them off, or you always wanna ask now and have her jot them down?
I think the ones that are listed right now is a good place to start.
Yeah, I'll just take the ones that we discussed tonight and send them over.
All right. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Jeremy.
Okay, so coming, moving on, we have the cable license renewal continued discussion.
So if I can just start on this. So, the first page in this, just for your information, is recent Comcast cable license fees. I tried to look at just the last few years so you can see what Comcast has agreed to. And then down the bottom is what our current, what we are currently receiving and what was proposed in their proposal contract. So, obviously, they proposed 3.75. The average is up to 5% now, which is the maximum. I would suggest we push for the 5% per quarter of revenue. The capital is all over the place. I don't know what they will agree to. I don't know what type of money they're looking, you know, or they will be willing to give us. Our request is more than most of what's on here. So, I think based on our budget, we have capital being at about $400,000 over 10 years. It looks like it's probably more likely that they'll give us somewhere around 150,000 if I had to guess, but...
What have they done in the past?
For us?
Yep.
$100,000.
So we go for more and...
Yeah, I mean, we should certainly ask for more. And we can still give them our budgeted forecast and, you know, ask for the most we possibly can.
Right.
But I would think it's probably unlikely that we will get the $400,000 that we're looking for.
Right.
The license fee is the next section. That, I'll be honest with you, I don't think it's worth it. I don't think we should add another 50 cents per subscriber to their bill. It comes out to like $1,000 a year in revenue for us. I just don't see the benefit of that. You know, you guys can obviously vote how you'd like and include that. I just don't see the benefit, 50 cents per subscriber annually. Again, it's minimal. It really doesn't have a huge impact for us. Most towns, it's just standard language in their new contracts, so you can see that some don't have it and some have a percentage annually. Like I said, even if we had all 21 Comcast, it's like a thousand bucks a year. So, I don't see that that item is really necessary. I don't think we should make or break it on that item alone.
But we wouldn't give it back to them. We'll just leave it the way we have it now.
We don't have that currently. They propose, that's their new standard language is to put that in. But like I'm saying is, if it's 50 cents less a year, I mean, again, it's minimal, but if it's less that we can add on to our subscriber.
Right.
It's not gonna impact us much to have that extra thousand bucks.
Right. Is that money for that 50 cents even though $1,000, is that supposed to go to something specific, or is it just general?
Just general. So, I think based on this, you know, we can certainly give this information to Bill Hewig, the budgeted forecast. I updated our business plan with the information that came out of the public hearing and added a few more things in. I've added the updates to the public buildings that should be listed on in the contract that was outdated in our former contract. So I guess it's to you now as the board to decide if you're ready to sort of hand this off to council and let him go negotiate, and what you wanna see from it.
Anyone wanna start?
Well, I'll start. I'd say we deal with the 5% at least. That's a no-brainer.
Since 11 of the 15 that was signed in 2019 are at 5%, I would say that's pretty much given.
Yeah.
Right.
Actually, go to 10%, but that's me.
Can I ask you a quick question from you, Denise?
Yep.
Are all these contracts that were, began in the last three years, all 10-year contracts?
They're all 10-year.
They're all 10-year?
Yep. And I double-checked that when I went through them all.
Thank you.
He said they wouldn't negotiate. They don't usually negotiate under 10 years. That's when I...
Correct. Correct.
And we're going to go at 400,000? They expect 100,000? Is that...
Well, so, in our budgeted forecast, I did put in two items that I doubt they would cover. So one of them, I'm sure we could get the equipment and stuff. We were asking for 150,000 to extend fiber from Town Hall to the, just the complex here, to improve communication this way, and to install cameras in the library for 50,000. I don't know that they would support those two items. I think the regular equipment replacement costs, they'd be fine with. Again, I don't know. I'm just looking and basing it on what other contracts were given.
I don't think, I don't think Bill would have a problem trying, trying to negotiate those issues either, so...
Yeah, I think he'll negotiate for the most he can get for us.
Exactly, right.
But I just think we should plan for, you know, closer to the 150,000 range and not the 400,000 range.
I, I, I agree. I think we're, I think we're close. I think we're good to go. I think Bill will, I think Bill will, I've had spoken to him. I think he will negotiate. He knows we want the best we can get, and I think Bill will do that. So, thank you.
And he has all those points that we have talked about before, right?
Yep.
Oh, which points?
The point, the feedback.
Yeah, so those, I put them in our plan.
Okay.
Cover letter?
Yeah, so I added those, the public hearing feedback, the à la carte channels, disparity, the disparity in pricing outage issues. I included in there that we would like to see reduced cable costs for our low-income families and seniors. So there were, I think out of all of those contracts, I saw, I think, three of them that had some type of reduced cost. So it's worth including. Whether or not they'll give it to us, I don't know.
Yep.
Denise, so the towns mentioned here, which ones best approximate Groveland? Like Newberry, I see Merrimack, Newbury.
Yeah, I think...
Well, there's, um...
Palmer?
Essex?
Yes, Ashburnham is probably the closest in area and population. I didn't wanna sort of focus on just this area, because as you can see, Merrimack and Newbury settled for less capital. But I don't really know what they do over there for capital. I mean, I know Merrimack, it's, obviously Chris handles their infrastructure.
But they have more commercial stuff there.
Right, I mean, but like Lunenburg is not a huge town, and they're at 170,000. Hudson is not a huge town, and they're at 2,000. So I specifically didn't include sort of the Boston's. I didn't include the big cities because we're not gonna compare ourselves to them. But of the, so these are the ones that have expired in the last few years that were really towns that I think we could, you know, put up a fight with.
Are you good, though?
I'm good.
Yeah, notice in Gloucester, 3.6%, 481,950, allows for all technology. What's the allows for all technology?
So that was the caveat that we have in our current contract that allows the money to be used for any technological equipment. It's not cable only. That was the only contract that still had that language in it.
Do we, do they give us a list of how many subscribers that they have?
No. And I've gone through, they sent, so I, when I get my quarterly payments, it talks about just revenue. There's nowhere on there that talks about number of subscribers. So that's why, even if I estimated it, you know, the 2,200 households, which I know not everybody has Comcast.
Yeah, that's why, I was just wondering if we had a list, not a list, but a number, because to see, are we, are Comcast losing customers?
Yes.
Are they gaining customers?
Comcast is losing, that's what I talked about.
Yeah, but it, but it'd be nice if we had, if we had a hard number. And I got a cable TV, cable TV bill today, and it went up again.
I'm sure January 1st.
Yeah, it, it's, it's getting near the saturation point. Their, you know, their costs are getting way, way out of line. I'm all set.
All right, Kathy?
I'd just echo what Selena Montson said about the allows for technology. At least we should perhaps put it in there, or they might throw it back out at us, but that was kind of useful during the last 10 years. Other than that, I think Denise should do a great job putting in the, that we want fiber optic in the town within the next five years, right?
Mm-hmm.
That we ask for them to unbundle things for their, for our customers so they can, don't have to buy a package of channels, half of which they don't want. Outage issues are listed. I think this is a good, good product. I think we should go for it.
Go ahead, one more thing when Kathy's done.
No.
I'm done.
She's good? Answered.
Okay, sounds good.
So I think if the board is ready, I would suggest you vote to put this forward to Bill Hewig with the request that he target 5% per quarter for the franchise fee and the request of 414,000 for capital support. I think we should request what we have in our forecast and let them counter.
Thank you for helping me with my motion.
Yeah, so move.
And any further discussion?
If you wanna add that, yes.
Do we want the allow for technology?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
So Mike seconded it.
Yep.
And any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, so moving on, we have the 64 Washington Street discussion, recap the January 14, 2020 meeting with the EPA and DEP, and what to do next. So I'll start. I know Mike and I were gonna go in to meet them. Mike had to go out of town, so Denise accompanied me. We went to Wilmington. We met with the DEP and EPA, and this is the Washington Street, I call it the chemical company building over there, Valley Screw. So basically what they said, what I said to them is, the roof is collapsing in, water's going in the building, water goes in the building, and they know there's mold, they know there's asbestos. And I said, "Well, it's all going in the building, it's gonna contaminate the ground again, you're gonna be back doing what you do." So basically, we talked about that for quite a bit of time, and they do not care. They don't have any care to touch that building. They did say to us that anything that we do on that site, anyone, anyone does, that they're gonna have to continuously go back to the EPA and the DEP, because they are gonna have input on construction, or ripping the building down, or anything. They have some equipment back there that's been vacated. In their eyes, they don't care, they're done. They spent 48 and a half million dollars cleaning that property, and as far as they are concerned, they're not spending another penny on it. They will work with the town. So I had said to them, Senator Ta was there, I said, "We talked to the center about possibly putting in 24-hour bedding care in there or housing." One of the ladies said, "You don't want any kind of permanent person on that land. Passive recreation would be the best. You can do it. It's gonna be a little bit harder to get 24-hour care in there," et cetera, et cetera. So that was kind of pushed over, that the town should kind of take the property on. And I said to them, and Denise said to them as well, "We do not want the liability of that property. So if we went in there and we were to tear the building down, and we were to pull up the foundation, and they were to find any kind of contaminants under the building, we would be responsible to clean that up possibly." So that's why we haven't taken it for tax title for not, the taxes being paid. It was talked about tearing the wood structure of the building down, getting money from Town Meeting or whatever, however we go about it, not touching the floor, the concrete floor, leaving it, and at least get the wood structure out of there. But again, we now take the liability. So then it was said in the meeting, we said, "Well, the owner of the building, why can't we pressure the owner of that building to go in there and to clean that building out of there?" And they said, "Well, we made an agreement with that gentleman. We went in and we told the gentleman, 'You owe us 48 and a half million dollars. We will let you sign off on that building. If that property's sold, whatever dollar amount the property's sold for, it goes back to us, toward our 48 and a half million.'" So they're basically, let that gentleman, whoever owns that corporation, owns that property pretty much, to turn around and say, "Forget it. We have no skin in the game. We're not gonna do nothing. It's gonna sit there. The town's out the money. And the only way that we can go and press forward with this is by tax title." Denise was gonna, and I'll let her speak on behalf of us, Denise was gonna call Town Council, discuss with Town Council about what they thought on the liability end of things were. I can tell you from sitting there, Senator Ta was completely aggravated and frustrated, and he even said he was frustrated and aggravated, because like he said, "You gotta get the first domino to fall, and we can't get the first domino to fall with this thing. And the domino, when we left there, has all been turned on to the town of Groveland for their headache to clean up the mess they started." So I'll turn it over to Denise, and then Mike had talked to the center after us.
Yes, so I'll just add on before I talk about council. So part of the issue is, the EPA has institutional control by placing a restriction on the property that has been filed at the registry of deeds regarding what can and cannot happen at that location. So anything that anybody wanted to do with that property would have to be done in conjunction with DEP and EPA's approval, along with these restrictions. As Bill alluded to, they don't recommend anything residential. It's funny, something that just made me laugh during the meeting was, "You can't do anything residential, but you can put municipal buildings. So if you wanna build a senior center there, it's okay. You wanna build a police station, it's okay. You just can't have people living there." They kept referencing Walpole, that Walpole was a success story, and they had a super fun site, and now it's a beautiful senior center, police station complex, and everyone in the town is happy. So I spoke to the woman in Walpole who spearheaded this project for 30 years. Her entire career in Walpole, she dealt with this project, and when they finally cut the ribbon on the new complex, she retired because she felt like she could not accomplish anything else in Walpole, that this took up all of her time for 30 years. She said it's a massive undertaking. They did so much community outreach, everything they did, they did with the neighbors, they set up monitoring systems to make sure the neighbors were protected, they did, they knocked on doors, they had public hearings, they had meetings with the EPA continuously. You know, she said it was well worth it in the end, but one of the issues they had, or one of, I guess, the benefits they had was, they were still, when she started there, they were in the middle of the cleanup efforts, and this was a property that had multiple buildings on it. So the EPA required the owner of that property to take down the largest building. They had to do that. The town of Walpole had to come up with the funds to take the other buildings down. So, you know, she said, "We could speak to her about any process and anything that they went through," but she said it was a very timely and lengthy process. The town of Westford is going through one currently. They have, you know, Westford is an affluent community. It's, it's a high marketed area. So the location, the town is looking, the town went through this process, and they have put an RFP out to sell this newly cleaned land. And they have now put the RFP out five times, and they have not received one bid, because nobody wants to buy land that they're unsure of. Because when someone buys it, they buy the liability that goes with it. So, in talking to the EPA and Town Council, the only way the town would be protected from liability is if we went through the foreclosure process. If we foreclose, we are technically exempt from liability, but if more contaminants show up, then that changes the liability. So we're exempt from liability that's there currently, but like Bill said...
Probably known liability.
Correct. But once, once the building comes down, the EPA couldn't remember if they tested underneath the physical structure. They believe they did a great testing several years ago, but they're not sure.
So hold on. So at that point of the meeting, I said to them, "Okay, so we'll get the town of Groveland to take the wood structure off, because they don't, they don't wanna enter the building, because they're saying it's unsafe. They don't wanna put their people in there." So I said, "Then we'll, we'll take off the wood structure of the building, don't touch the concrete. We'll have you come back in, we'll have you test the EPA and DEP, do all the testing, drill through the floor, and, and make sure before the concrete..." Am I correct? They're not, they don't, they want no part of that.
They want no part of it.
Because that's another 48 million dollars that they're not gonna pay.
Right, they don't, but they don't want no part of it. The point is, like I said, you guys are leaving us with a huge mess to clean up, and you walking away from this situation. I mean, behind the old watershed, there is equipment back there that that land has their equipment on it. You'd think they would've taken it and got rid of it. Nope. And then that land's one point, just, was it one acre, a little over an acre of land there?
I believe so, yes.
And the lady said to me, "What do you think you can sell that for?" I said, "It's probably only worth, on its best day, $150,000 if it was good and clean. Do you think that guy cares about giving you 150 on 48 and a half million dollars? You guys washed, you guys washed us away. You made a bigger mess than it's already there." But I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. Right, so on that point, I mean, that was my biggest frustration of the day was the, so it's, it was comical. You know, the DEP started by saying they have $1.7 million worth of liens on the property, which, I mean, that's pretty much what I expected. And then the EPA came out with their 47.2 million, but that's as of November. It's accrued interest since then. And so they came up with a settlement of non-payment, because they knew that no one could afford these amounts. The settlement was, "You need to market and put the facility up for sale, and we waive everything." So I asked the common question, what, once? They stick a for-sale sign, and they met this obligation forever? In perpetuity, they never have to do anything again? There's never been any follow-up? No one's gone to them and said, "Hey, you need to continue to market this?" Nope. As far as the EPA was concerned, they've met their requirements under the settlement agreement, and, and they were satisfied. But since we've talked, they'll look into it again and see if there's something they can do. Maybe they could send the guy a letter and encourage him to work with the town. So I spoke to council, because one of the things we were discussing, as Bill mentioned, was, you know, maybe as a public safety issue, the town looked to go to Town was, you know, maybe as a public safety issue, the town looked to go to town meeting, appropriate funds to remove the building.
The wooden part of the building.
Right. Council said absolutely not. Do not step foot on that property. Do not touch that property. If it's something we wanted to do, we would have to negotiate a covenant, a covenant not to sue with conditions through the EPA. That would be the first step in this process, is we would have to negotiate that. And pretty much, he said that comes out to, he said, they're not looking at the fifty million dollars. They're not gonna try and get that from the town. But they wanna put something in that should we then foreclose, and there is issues there, we come up with this agreement. He said that would be the first step. The second step would then be to foreclose and go through that whole foreclosure process, and then look to sell. He said, worst-case scenario would be, should the buildings really pose a safe, a public safety hazard, the building inspector could issue a demolition order. And then if it wasn't followed, we could pursue a court order. He said, but the minute you get that court order, the town assumes every ounce of liability on that property. He said, so I cannot encourage you enough not to do that. You know, he was very helpful. He talked about, you know, I said, well, what can I advise the board? He said, you know, we could certainly look at the documents that the EPA has filed. We can look at the property documents and anything on this property. He said, you would be looking at, obviously, legal expenses. And he said, what the town would have to do is hire an LSP, a licensed site professional, that deals specifically with hazardous waste. He said, so you would have consulting fees as well. So I told him I would bring it back to the board and get some direction. If you want council to pursue this anymore. I know in speaking to Senator Tarr last week, he thought he had some developers or some people on the horizon that might be interested in that site. I gotta be honest, I don't know that anyone's gonna wanna buy that property. Mass development.
Mass developed of housing.
Right.
And when Mike and I met with him before, I truly, truly think that Senator Tarr, and did you get this too, Mike? I think he would, once he got a clean road, he would help us get to where we need to go.
So my conversation with Senator Tarr was Thursday, following the Tuesday meeting that you guys had that I couldn't make. And just bewilderment and dumbfoundedness at the whole situation, and the inability of both the state and the federal government to do anything logical with the finances of the place. And then to look at being able to let the town do something logical without hindering the town is, this seems like a road that's not gonna happen, right? So my conversation, basically, I told him, it seems like the best thing for the town to do is nothing. Because it doesn't cost the town anything, and we're not gonna be beheld to these ridiculous EPA and DEP standards that no one can meet. Not to mention the seventy-five thousand hoops that we'd have to jump through at every turn if we wanted to do something with this. He did not know that that Walpole project took thirty years. It was stone silence for thirty seconds because he just couldn't believe that it took that long for a project to get done. He did mention the LSP and trying to get some information on that. He did mention the mass development housing to me and trying to do something with that. The good thing about this is that he's stubborn. He doesn't like to give up on anything. I'm stubborn. I don't like to give up on anything. But I mean, where do we go from here? Bill and I have been working on this for two years to get to a meeting where we could actually have some decisions made. And the decision was made ten years ago to do nothing. Which is utterly ridiculous that the government can't find a way to get something done. And it's incredibly frustrating to wanna get something done that has to be done with a location that has a safety issue, that's an ISO issue. And we're stuck with our hands tied because we have no route to go. So he's gonna do some research. He's gonna get back to me or Bill or somebody to see if there's anything we can do. But at this point, it just seems like ten years ago, the decision was made, and for the last two years, we've wasted our time trying to do something for the town.
So in that meeting, I think I've already said this, but Senator Tarr was saying how he has these developers that he works with to develop sites like this. And the lady and the gentleman, or ladies, whatever, it's from EPA and DEP, they emphasize they will work, whatever developer goes in there.
Yep.
They will work with them as long as they work every step of the way. And there are developers that specialize in these projects.
So there is an A team?
Right.
And then there's a B team?
Right, right, right.
And according to what he said, the B team has some issues. So if we can get an A team person-
Right.
That's a little bit easier. But it's still seventy-five thousand hoops.
Right. And the, I don't know, because he, when we left there, he didn't seem to me like he had any ideas other than us going to council. And when we said about council-
Right.
And we need to get the liability. If we can, the first domino that has to drop is liability. We gotta shelter our liability. Once we can shelter our liability, the town, we can move forward. If we can't shelter our liability, we're going nowhere. It's dead.
And I, I mean, I think the EPA, the woman next to me made it clear, because you kept asking, and I think she finally made it clear, that it's all in the town.
Right.
This is, the town needs to take the first step. The town needs to decide what to do. They will assist us, but it's the town's, it's the town's work.
Right.
It's gonna be the town's money. It's gonna be the town's work to do.
Also, in our conversation, one of the ladies said, didn't say it in all around, but kinda said it. She said, back to allude what you said, if this is gonna be a community center, an elderly center, a fire station, a municipal property, all well and good. I mean, I think they're gonna let that slide right through because that's what they're looking for. They do not want someone bedding in there. They do not want housing in there. They would really like to see, I thought, out of the picture, a town government parcel property. And I think that would be our route. If you were putting a senior center in there or something, I think they would be a hundred percent on board with that. But the point is, how do we get to the first liability?
Well, it seems like we can't because we don't wanna take on, but the EPA doesn't wanna do anything until we agree to do something.
Right, right.
But we can't come to that agreement where if we take it, we're gonna have zero liability on anything. And they say, no, we're not gonna do that until you tell us what's gonna happen with it.
And in, in the meeting, I mean, I emphasized that, you can ask Denise. I emphasized it at least two or three times. It's not fear to the people that live in that neighborhood. Their property values are not there. It's ugly to look at, this is just not fear for our town people to have to look at and have in their backyard. And they really don't think, they don't really, they didn't, it didn't bother them. It's not their yard. They don't have to deal with it.
No, they got forty-eight million dollars to throw at it again.
I mean, I will say, so when we left the meeting, the EPA was gonna go back through their records. They were gonna compile sort of a history, a synopsis of what's taken place since the cleanup. And they're supposed to send that to me, that I can provide the board when they get that done. The senator was gonna talk to mass development, and we were gonna talk to council and see if there's any common ground or what we can do from there.
So you know me, when I, I lay in bed and thinking all that. So I was saying to myself, if these people are saying to not remove the foundation and do not remove, if you, they said, if you do not disturb the foundation or what have you, that you're not gonna, your liability's going to be less.
Correct.
My point was, is there a way to look at this by saying, we rebuild the building that's there?
Can we burn it down?
Well, that's, that would be nice.
Can we have the fire department practice on it and burn it down?
Maybe, I don't know about that.
Still asbestos. I don't know if we wanna be burning it down.
A cloud of asbestos.
So does, does the town then look at saying, we'll reuse the foundation piece of this, but we'll put up a new structure on top of it? Can it be done? I don't know.
Right, but she still said, if the building comes down, they still need to test under the foundation, even though we're not removing it.
And if they find something, we took it, we own it.
Under that foundation.
Which is what we don't want.
Right, right.
I did talk to Sam when we came back from the meeting about a few things that were discussed. And he said that he could determine the, he could issue a safe demolition notice, which means the building is hazardous to step foot into, and you really could not do any abatement or mold abatement before the building comes down. He could issue that order. It still has to be dealt with once the building is down. But you wouldn't have to go through the total remediation process before you knock it down. I don't know if that helps us any, but he said he could certainly issue that because in addition to the roof, he's been informed that the floor is collapsing.
So my question is, I mean, there's a couple of things. One is, I know that going back, because I did read through those reports when they were doing the cleanup. They were checking the plumes. Are they, is our water department at all capable of doing that kind of testing? Or do we have to bring in an expert? Because that's how they were determining whether that recycling and cleansing of the water was working.
It's all through DEP and EPA.
Okay, so they're the only ones that are capable. We don't have that equipment or anything.
It's all them.
No, but they're, they're confident that the water and the grounds around the building are clean. It's the physical, what's directly underneath the building. They've tested all around it, and they're confident that that has been clean.
Right, but what people are saying now, the roof is collapsed and water's gaining in the buildings. Now water's coming out of the building, what's coming out of the building. So I was wondering if back in their reports, which hopefully they wrote, they documented, because people did go into the building, and I know for a fact that when my husband was on the fire department, your fire department might even have records. They went in that building. They have been in that building. So there might be records in the fire department or somewhere about what they saw when they were in that building.
Well, EPA said there's no tanks. There's nothing like that in the building.
I'm just saying, everybody seems to be wondering. I think we might actually have some records of that. Maybe check with Chief Clement, Retired Chief Clement.
It's under the building is what they don't know.
I know, I understand that. So my question is, and I don't know if you can answer this or forward this, we talk about demolition versus the building just collapsing. If the building just collapses, which it's going to, what do these DEP, EPA people say then? What do they say then?
They don't care.
Nope.
No, I mean, but I mean, we didn't demolish it, so now what?
So now you got a rubble. You got a piece of rubble.
It actually became a joke that Senator Tarr said he was gonna go back his truck into the building in the middle of the night and see, see if it'll just collapse. I mean-
Don't say too much.
Because that's what we're saying, is what happens if it just falls on its own? But again, their point is-
Then you have a rubble, a pile of rubble.
Then we either need to clean it up, or the owner needs to come in and clean that up.
But you said, I guess what I'm trying to understand is you said, and maybe they never made it clear, if we do a demolition, we have some sort of the liability. If the building collapses and we just cart away-
If we go on that property, we own the liability.
Right.
They're telling us not to step foot on that property unless we negotiate with EPA for a covenant not to sue.
My point that I made during the meeting was to get the owner, let's be nice to the owner. Let's not go yell at the owner. Go to the, get the owner and say to him nicely, hey, we're gonna relieve you of the forty-eight and a half million. We're gonna relieve you of selling the property. You give it over to town of Groveland. But what does it do again? It gives the town of Groveland the liability, and we have to deal. Because I said in the meeting, we'll give, we'll give him a dollar, and we'll own this land for a buck. And the lady said, as soon as you do that, you've now taken the liability on it.
The minute you sell, you own the liability. It's only if we go through the full, like-
Right.
Two-year foreclosure process that we are exempt from the majority of the liability.
The one lady from, I think it was the DEP that sat next to you, she, in all around ways, said, she wasn't worried about what was under the building, but she had to say there could be something under the building. But, and, and I said, well, you didn't go in the building, drill holes? Ah, we drilled some holes, but we didn't do a lot because it wasn't safe.
She's like, I think we did a great check years ago, but we'll have to check the records.
This is like a bad movie.
Can I just ask, the two-year foreclosure versus when we take tax title, we take the property, what's, just to be clear, the foreclosure process does what to that property?
Right, so right now, it's in tax title. So we have a lien at the registry of deeds. So should Valley Screw decide to sell the property tomorrow, technically with a third lien holder behind the forty-eight and a half million and one point seven million, then it's us with two hundred and twenty thousand in unpaid taxes. So right now, that's all we have, is just a lien on the property. Should we foreclose, we become the owner of that property. So we become the owner exempt from, again, it was exempt from liability, and so we take the building down and see if there are more contaminants, and then we own that liability.
Okay, so stop right there. So stop right there again. So that's when I said, why don't we get, why, I said, why don't we take the building off and leave the foundation there? But then, down the road, we could end up owning the liability later. So the lady's like, don't take the building down because you're gonna end up taking the liability later.
Go ahead, Bill. I don't know. Listening to this whole thing, it just seems to me that it's apparent that the state or the federal government, or both, dropped the ball on this-
Oh, yeah.
-ten years ago. We wouldn't be the first to do it. What does town council think about filing suit against both the federal and state agencies involved in this and said, you're responsible for this. Now you're trying to stick the town of Groveland with it. We're gonna take you to federal court. We're gonna find out if, if, if this is right. And if it's not right, you should be made to pay for your mistake, your incompetence, your negligence, and trying to leave the taxpayers of this town stuck with that cancer on Washington Street.
So obviously, that didn't come up, but-
I bet it didn't, but I'm bringing it up now.
But I think, and I think that was the point we kept trying to get across of the EPA. So first, we were told that it was the EPA that settled. So then we looked at the DEP folks, and we're like, okay, well, how about you go after them? And the woman like hung her head, and she's like, actually, we were involved in that settlement as well. Why, so, I mean, that's all, so they have a written, signed settlement that they feel like he complied with. Their, their requirement was market it and put it up for sale. And that's why I kept saying to them, but for what, one day? You put it for sale one day, ten years ago, and he's exempt for the rest of his life? That he doesn't have to do anything else with that property? That's not right. You should be knocking down his door every year, saying, put it up for sale. Do something. And that's when they said, we'll have to go back and look at the agreement and see if there's something we can go back at now. Because as far as they're concerned, he's complied with their agreement.
So, I know you wanna talk about, I kinda said it in the meeting when you were there, but in Merrimack, I have a property in Merrimack, I started saying, behind the property in Merrimack, there was the same thing. It's a chemical company. So about a year ago, they went in, they took the, the building down. They were negotiating with me to get into the property because they wanted to put housing. They had a nonprofit in Salem that was gonna go in there. They had it all set up. They're gonna put up these four buildings, and they were gonna do their thing. They had it all done. They came to me, tried to negotiate. They took the building down. Now Merrimack took this on themselves. The town of Merrimack took the project on, got the building down, and guess what happened? They found chemicals in the ground, and it's dead today. It's sitting there dead. They gotta go-
They own it.
They own it. They gotta, they own, they have to go clean it all up.
That's what we don't want.
They have to clean it up because now they found that there's a brook there. And so I was saying to the lady from Salem, I said, you know, what's going on? Well, it's dead now. So now it's, now they have to, they have to, it's, it's on them. So it's gonna sit there.
So could we ask our town attorney, this agreement that they made with the owner? I don't know if it's DEP or EEP or who they are, that must be filed in a public court or something.
So-
Can our council take a look at it? Because it'd be a little fuzzy on the details of this agreement, and they obviously don't pay attention to it. They've washed their hands of it. They walked away. They, they said, a little town like Groveland has to figure it out for themselves. Maybe our town council could find something in that agreement that helps with what Selectman O'Neill said, put in, putting it back in their court. Put it back in their court. Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised.
I'm sure there's some lawyer out there that would love to take this case pro bono. We'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, because that's, that's a quick process to sue the federal government.
You know what? It's been done before.
In, in the meeting, was, who owns that rear building? Was anything brought up about that?
Yes, the Archdiocese.
Diocese.
And what, in the meeting, they did bring it up, and they did say, why don't you make the property even better by, when you do this property, take that property on as well because it's probably for sale. It's been given back to the Archdiocese. it's probably for sale, it's been given back to the Archdiocese, and they're supposed to sell it themselves or whatever. But they were saying, include it all into one piece, and it'll be a bigger piece to sell, but you can't even get the small piece straightened out, never mind the...
I did notice that this past snowstorm, that property, that building in the back was plowed.
Yeah, they plow and mow it and everything.
Okay. The second, this front building, isn't that a, isn't that a Brownfields Superfund site?
Yes.
And so there's no money, no money is available or anything through that.
Well, so they were gonna check, because the rules on the Brownfield sites changed recently, so they were gonna go back and look at that to see if there was anything in there that they could apply towards this project. That was their answer when we asked the same question.
Maybe they're gonna look into it.
Yep, they were gonna look and see. But Bill kept saying like, well, why, why can't you take the building down? Why isn't there money? Like, why can't the EPA take the building down?
It should be grant filed in under the old clause if it changed.
Right. So that was their answer, was they were gonna look at the changes of the Brownfield.
And the amount of work, which killed me in the whole thing, and I can, we can sit here and talk about this all night, what kills me, if you got this building this big, they cleaned up acreage, they cleaned up acreage, and they sucked out of the ground, acreage, to, just to finish the project by taking that little patch down, I mean, I don't understand why it was such a big deal, I just don't get it. I mean, they spent millions and millions, and they couldn't just finish it by pulling up the last few little pieces. But anyway.
No. So when, I'll follow up, if I don't hear from the EPA in the next week or so, I'll follow up and see if they've compiled their list. I will say, I mean, they were all very nice, I don't know how helpful they were. I got an email, so they sent out the sign-in sheet, so we knew who everybody was. And then they sent me a follow-up email to give me the woman in Walpole's contact information. They really wanted me to talk to Walpole, Walpole is this success story, because it's this beautiful complex now, and the senior center has a bocce ball court, so everyone likes to drive by and look at that, and they don't even remember what was there thirty years ago, is what they told me.
Well, I told Senator Tara that that project, thirty years, long outlasts my political career in Groveland and his political career in the Senate.
I mean, the woman was really, she was really funny, she's like, honestly, I just retired. She goes, we had the, and I watched, they have a video of the ribbon cutting, and I watched it. They had like, all the, people were shooting like confetti, I mean, they really made a big deal of this. She's like, she's like, I had to, she said, I had to retire. She goes, I really don't know what else I could have accomplished in the Towne and Walpole after this project.
And thirty years, it'll outlast our seniors and most of our kindergarteners.
Yep, yep. So I'll follow up with the EPA and see, I mean, I can certainly look and see if the agreement, I have the restrictions that are filed at the registry of deeds, so I can do a search and see if there's anything else filed. If not, I can just reach out and see if we can get a copy of the agreement. The attorney, the attorney was there, and he was a character, so I can reach out to him. They did encourage our council to reach out to both the DEP and the EPA council, I just don't know that we're at that point yet, that we want to start wasting money of council to, to talk to them, if we don't really know what direction we're gonna go in. But if you all feel, I can certainly have council do whatever you'd like, I just didn't wanna spend...
The lady for the DEP was gonna give us some information.
EPA, so they were gonna compile the history of...
Right.
And then they were gonna look at the Brownfield money and see if that could be used, and...
Probably have to follow up with her.
Yeah, so I'll follow up with her in, you know, a week or so, if I don't hear from her, and just see where things stand.
I think the attorneys, I think everyone really was there to understand and help. I think she was probably the hottest one, that lady.
Yeah.
But the rest of them, I think, they will, I think she will work with us, but they just, we're not gonna put another penny out anyone.
Right, they'll work with us, as long as we're driving the car, you know, like, they'll, they'll help us, they're just not gonna steer the ship.
Right.
It's our, it's our job to do all that.
Right, I got it.
Right, I'm just thinking to keep an eye out for our taxpayers, that we should draft some kind of a letter to our town council and ask the town council's opinion on what Selectman Watson said on this Brownfields, rules on the Brownfield site, and also that if town council can access these agreements that they seem to not have in their hands when we meet with them. Because, nice as they may seem, they came there without documentation, without answers to questions, and so they're placating us. And they may be trying to be nice about it, but, I mean, if you, if you listen to people that have lived in town a lot longer than myself, they talk about the possibility that when that contamination occurred, there was a sense in the town that there were impacts on the population, on children that were born with more learning disabilities and diseases and things. There are people that will say they feel that that was tied to that contamination, and you can't put a price on that. And I think that they're probably very nice people and all, but they're also in the business of just keeping things moving and keeping, and we need to make sure that our attorney is pointing us in the right direction. And to your point, Selectman Wood, that you've spent a lot of time on this, it's not been wasted, it's not been wasted.
I think it's been wasted, the data's been wasted.
I disagree, I just feel that you're advocating for our town, and Selectman Dunn advocating for our town, advocating for our taxpayers, it's a good thing, and thank you for doing all that, even though it was frustrating and aggravating. Please do it again.
Go find another project.
Okay, we all set with the subject?
Yes.
Okay. So moving on, we have the town manager, continue discussion. Finalize the job qualification and review one table job, this table job description item.
These two pages.
So at one of your meetings that I was not at, you discussed the qualifications that Caitlin compiled into this list, but if you look at them, there are overlapping, I think you needed to narrow down what actual qualifications you wanted to stick with. And then, the second set of pages is, are the job description items you've already voted on, but there was one item that you had tabled for further discussion. So I think if you could vote on these two, that will take care of the bulk of what you need for a job description.
So, you wanna start at the top of the qualification list again, and go down through Bachelor's degree, I mean, should I be reading them, or?
Well, they kind of overlap, do you wanna take like...
Right, so you want, do you want a bachelor's degree in public administration, a bachelor's degree with a master's preferred, or a master's degree, like, those top three are all education, so, or four, top four.
Yeah.
Can I, can I suggest that we insert the phrase "master's preferred" after the one, two, three, fourth description, after the comma, and bachelor's degree in public administration? So it would read, bachelor's degree in public administration, comma, master's preferred, this is a major closely related field, blah, 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 et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This way, we would exclude the first three right off the bat and just move on.
I'm good with that.
Works for me.
Okay, so cross out the first three, and put a star next to the fourth.
Right, and then just insert that, those two words.
Yep. Okay. Next one is, minimum three to five years supervisory management experience and accounting, finance experience in municipal government or related field.
Again, I think that's redundant, because that's mentioned again in, in the fourth item, five years of experience as municipal administrator, experience with demonstrated track records, right? And it's also, the fifth one is redundancy of the one above it.
Yep, so five and six can cross out?
I would suggest that.
Okay.
If everybody else is good with that, kind of streamline the process.
So we're crossing out the minimum, minimum three to five years?
Yes, because it's already in the five years in the other one.
And the next one's five years, so cancel that out.
And the next one, five years, you're taking out?
Yep.
Yeah, it's already...
Yep.
Can we back up and take out the master's preferred at the end, if Selectman O'Neill wants it to stay?
Yeah, well, he said moved, so I, just in my notes, I have it moved from the end to after the comma.
It's skilled supervised knowledge in Microsoft Office, including Word, Excel, outlook and access knowledge of the Vanda Systems A+.
I think that should stay.
Okay.
Eight should stay, but nine is redundant of eight.
Negotiation experience out.
So eight is in, and nine is...
Yeah, because it says contract negotiations above.
And if I may suggest, we consolidate eight and ten to read, contract negotiations, collective bargaining agreements, and experience in conflict management resolution. Fourteen and fifteen are also, I find redundant, and in four.
Have a driver's license where you want, or what?
No, no, fourteen and fifteen will be five years municipal experience, five years supervised experience.
Oh, yeah, okay, so cross those. Five years municipal experience and five years supervised experience.
Oh, yeah, we already got that.
Cross those out. Experience working with town council should stay. Personal experience, personnel experience should stay.
Would not go with the experience in conflict management resolution, or not, no?
It could be separate.
I think personnel is personnel.
Okay.
Good personality, good communication skill, I think should stay.
And excellent written and verbal skills.
Can I just go back to that, Selectman, Chairman Dunn? Can we define good personality?
I know.
I mean, that's, that's a very quantitative kind of, it really, I don't know how we...
So cross out good personality and put good communication skills.
Well, just put personality.
How about excellent written verbal and communication skills in one line, up above under valid driver's license?
So cross that line altogether, then.
Excellent written verbal and communication skills.
All right, so cross this line out, good personnel, that's crossed out.
I like it.
Three to five years public communication, dealing with the public.
Again, kind of redundant, and so is the next one.
Cross them. Grant prep at management level. Yeah, the two above, we crossed them out.
Three to five years crossed out?
Hmm.
In public communications crossed out, yes.
Grant prep at management level.
Stay.
Okay. Budgetary experience in the town government setting.
Stay, stay.
Yeah.
Bond, stay, bondable, excellent...
Can I just comment, and I'm trying not to, but bondable, you don't want to bond your town manager. Your town manager should not be touching one dime of cash.
Okay.
So, bondable should not be a qualification of a town manager job.
Excellent.
You leave that to your treasurer collector, they are the only ones that handle money, your town manager's not touching cash.
Cross out bondable.
Good point.
Excellent interpersonal skills.
I already have that excellent written verbal and communication skills, and then...
Yeah, I think you consolidated with the good communication skills, so it's almost kind of redundant there. And that's it.
Okay. Now, you have the, at the bottom, the one item that was tabled, may appoint and remove department heads and other employees for which no method of selection is provided by law. Such appointments and removals shall be effective fifteen days from the date of a written notice unless BOS votes to reject such action. That's the tabled item. Go ahead, Ed.
If you look at most town managers' job descriptions, that's, that's in there in some degree, whether you add for just cause somewhere in there, but that's, I think that's part of their duties. And it, if you look at, if you look at, I think they all have something similar to that in there.
I would tend to agree with Selectman Wood, I think if you don't have this in there, it's part of the description. What do you have?
You don't have it.
You created a paper tiger. There's no teeth behind the authority, and that isn't gonna, isn't gonna work well for long.
So leave it.
Add it back in.
Add it in.
That would be my motion to add that tabled item back in.
All right. Everyone good with that?
Yep.
Do you want to get a vote on that?
I would recommend you vote on the changes on these two, so that they're done and complete.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we amend, we adopt the town manager qualifications as amended in this meeting, as well as to...
Add in.
Add in, thank you. The tabled item from the town manager job description.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
That was easy.
Okay, so, on this subject, maybe the next thing we should talk about would be to talk about salary, next time?
Yep.
For an agenda item?
Yep.
Okay, so if we can put salary down?
Do you have everything you need to have that discussion?
Probably not. We have a job disqualification now. I would like to ask one question if I can. I would like to say that when you have a town manager, I would like to know what other layer of government do we have? You're a finance director, let's just say, we don't have a finance director, and we have a town manager, so what other layer of government personnel are we gonna have to lay in?
Good, good point.
So you want to add that to the next meeting's discussion?
Please. Go ahead.
Can I make a suggestion, instead of going right to salary, can we look at maybe what the proposed organizational chart would look like now with a town manager in place, and then the additional roles or personnel we would need...
Right, move in the scale.
To fill it all in correctly, and then have a more formal kind of job description, qualifications, et cetera, et cetera, before us, before we contemplate a salary. This way, we can kind of digest what we've done, what we're looking for, what we're asking for, and how it fits into the scheme of our town government is present.
We had a couple of those before us.
From the old GAT committee.
Right, and we also had one from other towns that have done it.
Yeah.
I got one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there should be one in the West Newbury documentation, from back when, when this conversation started.
Okay, so leave the salary out for next meeting.
Yeah, I think if we can get to that point where we've had it laid out, and we have some kind of idea on what the structure will look like.
Okay.
I think that would help us better...
But I think you all have to put that structure together. I think you need to have the discussion on what the structure's gonna look like.
That's what we're gonna do next meeting.
Yes, I don't think it should be given to you, I think you need to have that conversation so that you are putting the structure together.
I was trying to get you to do it for...
I'm not doing this, I've told you. I'm not doing this, not on this topic.
I tried, I tried.
No, but I just think that Denise has to be careful how involved she gets in this, because if it does come to intuition, she might be applying for this job or whatever, and I don't want the people to come back and say, wait, she did the job qualification, she did this, she did that, and then she now gets, hey, you can't be involved in this, you've done all the work.
True enough.
And I'm only trying to protect her, I've told her, I don't think it's, I think you were doing her injustice by making her do what she's doing.
Wouldn't it be possible, yeah, I'd be willing to collaborate with someone if Denise would provide me the current positions in the finance department and their titles, we could, I have this on a computer file, that I could just, it makes it easy to just change...
It's the same thing that they did in West Newbury, same exact thing.
Yeah, it's easy to change.
You guys want to see it?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, we need a whiteboard, but we have this, this is good.
Because we want to focus on looking, zooming in on that department.
That's what I'd be looking for.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, before our next meeting, like, would one other person like to just be someone to bounce it back, just so that we don't have to, like, we can get, we know...
Sure, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
You may want to dig up the one from West Newbury as well as the one she has, if you can.
Yeah, if I can find it.
I'll try to find it, might...
We have it on our, we have it on our paperwork.
Yeah, if we have a copy of it, I'll help Kathy with it.
They'd send it to us, the file that has this, this kind of a charging thing, you know.
You want their actual, like, edited file? I mean, we have it scanned, but you want their, you want to take theirs?
No, 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 I wouldn't take that, well, I'll borrow some of it.
Kathy and I will get together and figure it out.
We'll do it.
So can I, so, Bill, what was the second item you wanted on there? You were talking about the job description?
What?
No, the hierarchy.
Right, the hierarchy, and then you said something else after that.
Oh, just kind of, this all, you know, we've got all these pages now kind of loosey-goosey, if we could kind of put it all into a more kind of formal document.
But do you feel comfortable doing that? I mean, should...
I mean, I have no problem, I can certainly take what you've written and just put it into the format we use on job descriptions, and then I can leave all the...
What we're saying is, take what we talked about tonight.
Right.
Recompile it into another new, brand-new...
No, I think he's saying to take it and start forming an actual job description, which, I mean, all I'm doing is taking what you voted, I'm not adding anything to it, so I I can consolidate that for you, I have no problem with that.
All right, okay.
And then you all still have to add the, there'll be sections that you'll have to add too, but I can take this and put it in those sections of a job description.
We might want to revise after having, taking a look at it again with this amount of elapsed time, we might have different opinions, or want to tweak something here or there.
Okay, so we're good with that subject for now?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're moving on, votes of the board, open the 2020 special and annual town meeting warrants. Articles may be submitted to the finance director until March 2nd, 2020. Request by the Groveland Garden Club to install a wooden post at 26 Broad Street Little Red Schoolhouse, and also to approve and issue amended liquor license at Nichols Village, Nichols Village, Nichols Village. So, we'll start out with the first item, open the 2020 special and annual town meeting warrant.
So moved, is that what you're looking?
Yep.
Yep.
Need a second?
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yep.
So. Anyone else?
No, that's just procedural, we do this every year.
Just gotta do that, that's it.
And then we'll close it on the March 3rd meeting, I think, or March 5th, whatever that meeting is, so departments, boards, committees can start submitting warrant articles, and I will start compiling those for the warrants.
Okay. So, should we talk about?
Yeah, the next one is a request by the Groveland Garden Club, you'll see their request, they're looking to install just some wooden posts that they can hang their signs on, they were using, I think she said. They were using some other things, oh, they were using plant hooks and they were not sturdy enough, they'll take care of the cost and the posts, they just want permission to be able to put them in the ground.
I don't see a problem with that.
Question.
Go ahead.
Reading, reading this request over, and it, it, it makes sense, but is this something that needs to go to zoning? This is in a residential zone, zoning has to approve signage like, like any other business. Is, are we, are we stepping on something that should be a zoning, a zoning approval? If it was a, any kind of a business in a residential zone, they gotta, they gotta go to zoning to get approval for, for signage as far as size, et cetera, and I'm just wondering if, if this is something that needs to go there also.
I can certainly ask tomorrow, I don't think they're looking to put permanent signs up, I think they're just looking to put posts and when they have a sale to hang their sign out for that period of time, but I can certainly speak to Rebecca tomorrow and see if, I don't know that that's considered actually a business either, but I'll find out.
Well, that doesn't matter, it's a, it's signage in a residential zone, which would be required to, to zoning approval.
But we don't require for political signs, right, but.
Not that I'm against it, I just, I'm wondering if we're stepping on toes that we should send them to zoning rather than.
I think it sounds like authority there, they just want to redo it.
They have, but I, I would compare it more to like political signs, you know, homeowners don't need zoning approval to put a political sign for a period of time, I think it's probably a similar post with a sign for a sale or something.
Well, I would, I would agree with that, but these, these are going to be permanent posts, and a, and a political sign is not a permanent sign.
I'll check with them, I mean, if you want to approve it pending ZBA approval, I mean, that's fine, and I'll check with Rebecca in the morning. If you want to wait till the next meeting, that's fine, too.
We could make a motion based on pending approval.
Whatever you'd like to do.
Well, I'm thinking it's January 21st, and it's a garden club, I'm not thinking they're going to be planting anything soon, right?
Right.
So.
So all we need to do is make a motion pending on.
So if we wait till the next meeting and hear back from Rebecca, I don't think it'll hurt anybody.
Well, it's fine with me.
If we make a motion pending the, the ZBA, I mean, if that's the only issue, then, then we have, then, as long as there's no ZBA issue, it's done then, right?
Right.
It would be done, or you, or I can talk to ZBA and put it on your next agenda, however you'd like to handle it.
All right, I say talk to ZBA and put it on our agenda.
Yeah, I motion, we table this until the next meeting, and then we have a better, a clearer understanding of where they sit.
So you get two motions, Ed, are you motioning to table?
Yeah, almost, almost.
All right, so it passes, so we're gonna motion it till. Next meeting.
Need a vote?
I, I think he just took a roll call vote technically.
Yeah, well, it was kind of vague vote.
Bill and, Mike and Ed tabled, and I think, I was definitely moving it forward, I think Kathy moved it forward. Okay, so we're moving on now to approve and issue amended liquor license to Nichols Village.
So this was, you voted on this back in November or December, pending their property addition, we heard back from the ABCC last week that they approved it, so now the board just has to vote to formally issue the new license.
Motion to approve and issue amended liquor license to Nichols Village.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to finance director's time.
Just a couple quick things. So I was, excuse me, was looking at the calendar coming up, and similar to what we've done in the past, I think we will need to add a special board of selectmen meeting on Monday, April 6th, to vote the budget and the town meeting warrants, everything has to be posted by April 10th, and I think we should plan for an extra meeting, if we don't need one, we can certainly cancel it, but I would like you all to mark Monday, April 6th as an additional meeting to finalize everything for town meeting.
What was that, the date again, please?
Monday, April 6th.
Thank you.
The town clerk has asked if the board would consider moving their Monday, March 2nd meeting to a different location so they can set up for the election the next day.
I have no problem.
No, it seems, seems like a common sense thing, we could, we could move it to the fire station, that's, that's wired for cable TV, I think we used it once, actually, the audio is quite, quite, quite good over there, that, that makes sense, what, what was the date on that again?
Monday, March 2nd.
So you're talking about central stations wired for this?
Yes, but I don't believe, Tracy, could it broadcast live over there? From the fire station, we can't broadcast live, correct, just record?
I believe we can broadcast.
Oh, we can, okay.
Well, we had a meeting over there, Tracy, didn't that go live? Yeah, and.
I don't think it did, because we were criticized, because it was the final meeting when we voted everything for the town meeting, and we were criticized.
I'm half in question, but I believe we can go live.
Okay. Okay, so we will plan to move that meeting, and then we need to schedule some executive sessions for contract negotiations, so if the board wants to look at calendars, then either let me know when definitely is no good, or when is preferred, you have my contract and the police chief contract, and then we'll have to have negotiations to talk about the union contracts as we, as those are coming up.
That's it.
Yes, so I don't know if you want to talk about dates right now for some of those, or if you want to just think about it and get back to me at the next meeting, but we will have to schedule some meetings.
Question for the chair, do you normally include, like, an executive session at the end of a meeting to try and get, get some of this to work done, or do you usually schedule a whole separate meeting for it?
We usually set the time.
So I'll say, it depends on the topic, we wouldn't schedule, I don't think, at the end, we usually schedule at the beginning, so we would schedule like a 5:00 or a 5:30 executive session, depending on what the topic and how much time is needed, you could certainly do that for a few occasions and see how much can get done, if people don't have issues with being here for like 5:00, we could do that.
So, for example, if we were decided to start with police chief contract, we would meet an executive session with you present and go through the current contract and say what we think, and then?
No, so normally with the police chief and myself, it's, you're meeting with him and just having that discussion at that time, there's really not a lot, I think, that you need to, I mean, if there's stuff you want to discuss outside of the contract with him or with me, you certainly can meet without us present, but it hasn't really needed to be that way.
So then, the follow-up would then be the collective agreements are the ones that we meet with you, and then go through it, and then you go meet, I get it, okay.
Yes.
I'm open to what everyone else wants to do, why don't you go do it?
I'm open to whatever anyone wants to do, earlier, 5:00's fine, this time of year for me, yeah, I know people work, though.
Five should be good.
Five, there you always, always best. But.
5:30 or 6:30, that's still good, that's an hour.
The day is, as long as there's no conflict with the fiscal building committee meetings, which are usually the second Tuesday of the month, I have no problem.
Do you have a problem with any?
No.
Is anyone planning?
Well, I got a lot of problems, but not with that.
Nothing we can cure here for you?
No, nothing we can cure.
Does anyone have plans to miss a meeting coming up, and we can avoid that?
I'm going away on February vacation.
Okay, so you will not be here on the 18th?
Me, too.
You will not be here on the 18th, will three of you be here on the 18th? The rest of you?
I will be.
On, in February?
February 18th?
Yeah, I don't expect to be here on the 3rd, though.
At the start of spring training?
March 3rd, or February 3rd?
Uh, February.
Okay, all right, so I won't schedule anything for those meetings, I assume you all want to be present?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll throw out some dates, I'll, I'll coordinate and send some dates to you via email, that's something you could get back to me, but I'll stay away from those two. And then if anyone thinks they're gonna not be here on the 18th, please let me know of the three of you.
On the 18th, yeah, I mean, if, if enough of us don't, aren't gonna be on the 18th, I would be open to moving a meeting to the 24th, which is, just to make, do a makeup meeting.
Right, well, if three, if three will be here, I mean, we can.
You can do your right.
Have business, and then I will just, there was very little that took place at the school building committee meeting last week, we discussed the schedule, Bill, did you get, I left you the paperwork?
Yes, thank you very much.
So we just sort of discussed the upcoming schedule, and some things that have started with, there is an interior subcommittee, which I'm actually kind of bummed that I missed that meeting when I could have been on it, because that's one of my big concerns, is what the interior is gonna look like, but apparently there's only five people on the interior subcommittee, so they started meeting, and they're going to be bringing recommendations back, hopefully, to the full building committee, but otherwise, there are some important dates coming up with the state, so I believe it was, the February meeting is going to be important because the deadline is right before that, and then they have some subsequent meetings in February to sort of wrap some stuff up, and then I think, right now, May is when they're hoping to break ground. So, that is all I have.
Yeah, I, I did not make that meeting, I want to make that clear, my son was playing in a, his varsity basketball game at the same time, and as important as this building is, I can make up the meeting, but if I miss the game, I miss that forever, so I hope people are gonna understand that, family comes first, and thankfully Denise was there to cover me, have my back, appreciate it, it turns out it wasn't lengthy meeting at all.
It was not, and you were not the only one missing, it was actually, it was a lot of people that were not there.
Well.
So, it's that time of year.
I don't like to miss those meetings, it's, it's a big price tag, and I like to be there at all.
So that your last thing, you got more?
Nope, that's it.
All right, so moving on, we have selectmen's time reports, starting with Kathy.
I don't have any reports, I just wanted to ask a question about the capital, because we are the capital committee, right, so we're listening to everybody's needs, and are we then gonna just have kind of a work session with a budget for capital so we can figure out what can actually go on the warrant? Is that how you did it last year?
Yeah, so, I mean, last year, I, so on the next agenda, I have time for that discussion to recap sort of the capital projects, and if the board is ready to start voting on them, because then the finance board will weigh in on what the board voted on, so we have, I will give you my recommendations based on what we have for free cash and what other appropriations we make annually, stabilization, OPEB, capital, things like that, so I'll give you my recommendation, and then the board is welcome to either take that, change it, or vote however you'd like, and I have that on for the next meeting.
Okay, anything else, Kathy?
That's all, thank you.
Ed?
No, I was at the CPA meeting a short time ago, went over items that were presented, and they'll be discussed at the next meeting for, for follow-up, there were some questions, one on like the dog park, we got that, that should be settled now, but nothing's been finalized yet, they're still in the discussion stages on a lot of the stuff.
Okay.
That's it, that's all I got.
I don't have anything, Bill?
I missed the last high school building committee meeting to watch my son play basketball, so I was not there, and I do not have anything else to report, as we have not had a recent meeting of the rec committee as well, so I'm waiting for that, can I ask a question, though?
Sure.
Selectman Watson, has, has the cable advisory board had any meetings recently? And you're, are you still a member?
Yes, no.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Mike?
No, I don't have that.
Old or unfinished business, starting with Mike.
Still nothing.
Phil?
No, sir, not at this time.
Me neither.
Ed?
Uh, nothing.
And Kathy?
No.
Okay.